I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please rise and stay standing for the invocation. Pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing if you choose to. We have a little change in the schedule tonight. Carrie Schneider, Director of Promise Land Christian School, who was going to do the invocation, is out sick. So I would like to do a moment of silence for the people affected by the hurricane, Irene, and also the people affected by the wildfires in California. Town Clerk, would you please take a roll call?
Councilmember Callie Vianakis, here. Councilmember Watts, here. Councilmember McMahon, here. Councilmember Skilicorn, here. Vice Mayor Toth, here. Mayor Friddell, present. Thank you. All accounted.
Thank you. And Town Clerk, would you please read the Statement of Participation?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Anyone wishing to address the council regarding items listed on the agenda or under call to the public should fill out the Request a Comment card located in the back of the council chambers and hand it to me, the Town Clerk, prior to consideration of an agenda item. Once the agenda item has been called, late request to speak on that agenda item will not be accepted. When your name is called, please approach the podium, speak into the microphone, and state your name for the public record. Please limit your comment to three minutes. It is the policy of the mayor and the council to not comment on any items brought forth under call to the public. However, staff may be directed to report back to the council at a future date or to schedule items raised for a future council agenda. It is also requested that applause be kept to a minimum to avoid disruption of the meeting, to maintain decorum, and provide for an equal and uninterrupted presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll have reports by Mayor, council members, and Town Manager, and I think we have a special report by our Town Attorney tonight.
Special Report. Mayor, Council, thank you. Special Report sounds far more important and official than what I'm about to say. But for the public's information, items eight C, eight E, and eight F on tonight's agenda have either been continued or withdrawn and won't be, action will not be taken on those items or discussed tonight. However, the Town Clerk, yes, eight C, eight E, and eight F. However, the Town Clerk has advised the mayor, manager, and myself that we've received several comment cards about item at least eight C. Is that correct, Town Clerk? And so if you're here to comment on eight C, we will still take comments during that time when we would otherwise hear the item, but no action will be taken. So that's for the public's information.
Thank you. Rachel?
Mayor, Council, community, welcome back. Happy New Year. It feels funny to say that. It feels very late in the year to be saying that, but it is our first council meeting back. I did want to share a few quick updates. One, I think our council is aware, and many of our residents, that we had a waterline break over the weekend. I want to just thank our public work staff, as well as MCSO and EVCor for their quick response in getting that addressed, getting the roadway and the traffic detours in place. I recognize that we can't always fix the situation, but they are responsive and working to make that repair as quickly as possible. Also a reminder that the 2025 legislative session is underway. Our, excuse me, the governor has called that session. They have already started to receive bills and whatnot. We'll continue tracking them, just as we have in the past. Starting at our next council meeting, we will have a legislative update item on the agenda so that we can discuss those items and get any direction that the council might want to take with any of those proposed actions. So we'll continue to monitor that. The State of the Town is next week, next Wednesday, January 29th. Mayor, I hope I'm not stealing your thunder, but the State of the Town, it'll be held at the Community Center. It is free to the public. Registration is requested, so if you'd like to attend, please hop online and register. I believe we still have room for that program. Lastly, I wanted to take a moment to recognize the extraordinary actions of one of our park attendants over this weekend. He encountered a community member in distress at one of our parks, and he demonstrated immense compassion and quick thinking and went above and beyond to ensure the individual's safety and well-being, staying with them until appropriate help arrived. It's a powerful reminder that the work of our staff is not limited to traditional work hours behind a desk or behind a computer or something of that nature. It's our staff's unwavering commitment to our community that really makes this difference. Brett and his actions reflect the essential role of our team and how our staff plays a fostering role in supporting a safe environment for everyone. So we're really incredibly grateful for Brett's actions and his commitment to seeing through this situation. So I want to just thank him. I also want to thank Kevin Snipes, our MCSO staff, as well as our fire staff, who intervened to support this process. But it was really a big deal. Friday night was very emotional, so I just think it's worthy of taking a moment and saying thank you.
Thank you, Mary, uh, Mary, Mayor Friddell. Okay, so I just have to say this my first time. When I was sitting out in the audience area, I was referred to this as what I did on my summer vacation. And I wasn't sure how important this was for everybody to hear, but, so I'm trying to learn what you want to hear from me. So today, I will say what I heard other people saying, but please email me if you think you don't want to hear the few things that I've done on our break, or what's important to you to hear from me during this time. I did attend the Dark Sky Discovery Placement of the Dome in December. I also went to the lighting of the menorah at the Shabbat on the Avenue of the Fountains. I attended the Four Peaks restroom ribbon cutting, and what I found was really interesting was that's a prefab building, a block building, which I didn't know they do prefab block buildings. I thought just maybe frame. But it came in two pieces, and it cost approximately $500,000, but it only cost the town $11,000 because the rest was paid for in grants, which I thought was really wonderful. And also, I did attend the Fountain Hills Connection Breakfast at Adiro, learning about the dark sky. They had a dark sky presentation, and I did not realize that they have to apply for our town to be considered a dark sky town every year. So when we do yarding in our lights, lights in our yard, lighting in our yards, it really could affect our designation as a dark sky. So if you yourself or know, have any neighbors that are not following the code of our town, gently let them know so we can keep that designation. And the last thing is I want to thank our mayor. Thank you very much for having us fly the flag at full staff to honor our new president that came in, Donald Trump. It's a great day to be an American. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hello, everybody. It's so nice to be here tonight after a month off. It's good to be, get back to work. I'd like to thank everybody here for coming, being here live in person, concerned about your town, live streaming, of course, on YouTube and Cox Channel 11. We know you're out there watching. Public engagement can help governments make more informed decisions, consider the needs, opinions, and visions of the public. That's what we're here to do, to represent you. I hope that everybody enjoyed their holidays, their family, all the football and fun, but now it's time to get back to regular order. We did, we did a lot of things in the last month, so I'm going to make it kind of brief. I did meet with our town prosecutor, and this is the first time I've done that, not as a defendant, but just over lunch. And he's a very good man, and he's very concerned about delivering uniform justice in a good way, and so I can really voucher him. He's a good person. I too, like Gail said, went to the International Dark Sky Placement of the Dome. It's just a huge thing for our community. We did have a holiday party for our staff, and that was hosted by our town engineer, David Janover. Thank you, David, for doing such a good job and for treating us to Blue Christmas. I thought Ellis was in the room. We also attended the Habad Center lighting of the menorah. Most of us went there. I was with there with the mayor, and the mayor got to speak to the public. The State House is back in session now, and so we are going to have a resumption of the weekly legislative updates every Monday morning. Very important. And lastly, of course, our outstanding Chamber of Commerce had a number of ribbon cutting ceremonies, and we thank them for that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilman Watts?
Thank you, Mayor. I went to a few different events. The most notable one was the one hosted by the Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce, and that was the Dark Sky Event Connections. And it was, the challenge there was keeping up with everybody that was there, business cards, setting up meetings, and I didn't know how much trouble I could actually get into talking to all those folks, but I can. So that was the most notable one for me, other than the things that Councilwoman Earl mentioned about the prefab building and the brick facade that is on the exterior of that building. It was very interesting, so thank you.
Well, first of all, I hope everyone had a wonderful Christmas and New Years. I know it's been a while since we've seen each other, and it's been a great month. We did open the new bathrooms. I was unable to make the ribbon cutting, but I did make it the very next day. And the building looks beautiful, very clean. I love the blue and white, very Fountain Hills themed. And we did resume the legislative update, so this morning we went over, there wasn't too much yet because, please note, this is when the legislature is introducing these bills. A lot of them change over the next couple months, and some of them completely change over the next couple months. So I won't raise any red flags or green flags quite yet. There are several that I'm excited about, but that deadline to introduce bills is February, I think it is the third for the Senate and the 10th for the House. There's already 830 that have been introduced in the state legislature, so quite a lot, but only some of them will be something that Fountain Hills is keeping an eye on. So we'll be tracking those and giving updates.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for attending, and I hope you and your families had great holidays and a happy New Year. You know, after the first of the year, all of a sudden it got busy again, which is nice. I've attended a few board meetings. I also met with the town prosecutor. I attended the chamber breakfast for Dark Skies, which no matter how often you see that presentation, you always learn something new. It was great to see the dome placed, and also I attended the legislative call. And we really need to pay attention to a lot of bills that are coming down. There's one of significance that could reduce our income to our town, and we just can't allow that to happen because we don't have a separate real property tax to make up for that. So please stay tuned on that, and we will all remain aware and report back about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Skilicorn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So it's a new year, a new day, and America is back. Yesterday, I have to admit that I cried when Karen Underwood sang "America the Beautiful." That was a very special moment. On a more local level, I attended the last couple legislative briefings, and I know the League of Cities and Towns, they're, they were very vocal about opposing a bill by the Senate President to protect taxpayers. And frankly, I disagreed with them on that. So I actually did go down to the Capitol last week, and I did speak in committee, and we passed it out of committee. So that's something that really matters to me. I think taxpayers need more protection instead of less. So that's what I have for today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'd like to start out reading something that I received, a message from a resident here in town, kind of piggybacks off of what our town manager said. So this is a note of information and praise. On Tuesday, the town finally received the form required for the liquor commission to start the 20-day notice for the Elks Lodge, local Elks Lodge here in town. It was, it was not without additional effort and diligence by Paul Solinger. Paul is our Director of Finance here in town, so Paul, we really appreciate your attention to this for the, for the Elks Lodge. He turned it around that same day, and it was posted on Tuesday. I seldom have much to say positive about government at all levels. That said, my dealings with the town staff of Fountain, the town staff of the Town of Fountain Hills over the past year have been exemplary. So that tells you what kind of employees that we have here at this town. Somebody reached out to actually take the time to send this to us. Since working with the staff on the golf outing last year to my dealings with Paul and others regarding the liquor license this year, I have received only courteous, timely, and respectful cooperation. I can honestly say it is not like dealing with bureaucracy, but like working with a good friend. So we really appreciate your efforts, Paul. Thank you for seeing that through for our local Elks Lodge. And like the others, I did attend a number of things, the restroom ribbon cutting. I also attended the swearing-in and actually swore in new school board members for the Town of Fountain Hills Unified Schools District. I attended the swearing-in for the new mayor and the council over in Scottsdale. Now, why did I do that? Because they're our neighbors, and we might have some projects coming up with them. So out of respect for them, I attended that, and it was probably 500 or 600 people that were in attendance that night. So I also attended the chamber breakfast. I've met with SRP. I met with our county supervisor, Tom Galvin. I met with the new sheriff, Jerry Sheridan. I had probably at least a half a dozen meetings with our town manager to go over different things that are coming up here, and I've met with several of our department heads as well. I'd also like to just remind people that we have the volunteer expo coming up. I think that's tomorrow, tomorrow at 3:00 at our community center, and then we have the health fair coming up on Saturday. And then I have just a couple of housekeeping things that I want to, that I want to give notice on for our future council meetings. We're going to try and limit our, our school vacation talk, as some people identify, to two minutes each going forward. We're going to start that in March. I want to clear up a point of order confusion. At our last council meeting, there was a point of order that was called out. The proper way to handle a point of order, if a council member has a point of order on an item, is to have the chair, whether it's myself, the vice mayor, or senior council member who's in charge of the meeting, address that and find footing for it. If there isn't, then that person can appeal to the body up here and get a vote on it. So that's how we're going to handle that going out in the, in the future. And also, as is mentioned by our town clerk, speaker cards for the call to the public or an agenda item have to be turned in before that item is started. So there'll be no longer an opportunity to jump in at the last minute. We're going to, we're going to have orderly meetings, and we're going to continue this in that fashion going forward. So again, if you're here early enough to get in for the call of the public, turn your sheet in, and then we'll proceed from there. So that's all I have on that. Anybody have any questions on that? Thank you. The next thing on our agenda is the mayor's business spotlight. So what is that? This is something new that we're starting. It's a new recognition to businesses that have been outstanding community members and have been around a long time. So I don't know if Marlin or Karen are here tonight from Fountain Hills Express. Come on up, Marlin. I'm going to read this, and then I'm going to come down and present this to you, and I'm going to give you a minute or two to say something about your business. So in recognition of your outstanding contributions to the Town of Fountain Hills, this certificate celebrates your dedication to excellence, innovation, and community engagement. Your commitment to quality and service has not only strengthened our local economy but enriched the lives of residents and visitors alike. The Town of Fountain Hills is proud to honor you and your business as a vital part of our community's growth and success. So let me come down and present this to you. We'll get a picture, and then we'll give you a couple of minutes to say something about your business. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Marlin Girardi, and I want to start off by thanking our new mayor, Jerry Friddell, and the Town of Fountain Hills for this opportunity. My wife, Karen, and I have been residents and business owners of Fountain Hills Express Convenience Store and Deli since 2003. Our main focus was to build a business based on consistency and excellent customer service. Fountain Hills Express consists of a convenience store with a deli, beer and wine, a wide variety of sandwiches, gyro, paninis, meatballs, chicken parmigiana, Italian beefs, burgers, buffalo wings, and et cetera. Our number one seller is our Italian sub. Our deli serves breakfast, lunch, and dinner all day long, along with freshly made daily albo cor tuna, chicken, and egg salads. Catering is also available. We provide the largest selection of craft beer in Fountain Hills, along with domestic beers and NA beers. We also offer wine and beer samplings with vendors. We are proud to be a part of this amazing community, hope to be here for a while. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your business and being in our town.
Thank you for having me here.
And the next thing on our agenda is the mayor's special service award. Lee Holmes, are you in the audience tonight? Would you please come on up? So I found out what Lee was up to. Lee Holmes, at her own expense, has traveled down to North Carolina to help out the people who have been affected by the floods and the hurricanes. So on behalf of the Town of Fountain Hills, we have the mayor's special service and outstanding citizenship award. So on behalf of the Town of Fountain Hills, we extend our heartfelt gratitude for your selfless service and unwavering dedication to the North Carolina communities impacted by Hurricane Helene. Your contributions have profoundly touched the lives of those in need, embodying the true spirit of compassion, resilience, and civic responsibility. So I'll give you a minute if you want to say a few things, but we'll get, we'll get a picture, and then we put you on the spot.
Mayor just said to show up today at 5:30, so here I am. I did this not for any reason. They needed help. They put a call out for help, and I showed up, and like other volunteers that have gone there, they keep going back. So I've made three trips so far. I can't tell you how many more I'll make. We'll just have to see. I also have to work. But they needed help, and I went. It's as simple as that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next on the agenda is our appointment of council members to the, to subcommittees. So we have two subcommittees. We have Subcommittee A, which has got Vice Mayor Toth, Councilmember Skilicorn, and Councilmember Watts, and Subcommittee B, which has Councilmember Earl, Councilmember McMahon, and Councilmember Callie Vianakis. Thank you for serving on those committees, you guys. And now we have a proclamation. This is the designation of the week of January 19th, 2025, as Martin Luther King Jr. Week, and I'm going to turn the microphone over to and I'm going to turn the microphone over to Councilwoman Brenda Colley-Vianakis.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. A big thank you goes out to so many people, to the mayor and this council, for having this Second Annual Martin Luther King Proclamation, to the Fountain Hills Unified School District, to the town staff for doing this, all the work they've done behind the scenes, and of course, for all the students that participated, not just the winners, but all the participants. Thank you all, but particularly for the winners. Dr. Martin Luther King's message of nonviolence and peaceful protest is still relevant today. Dr. King was a leader in the civil rights movement and a champion of nonviolent protest. His work and legacy continue to inspire people to fight for justice, equality, and human rights. Dr. King positively impacted the world by serving as a leader and a speaker for the voiceless. King spoke out against racial injustice and inequality during a time that Black people were seen as treated as less than, less than their white counterparts. It is my honor to read this proclamation on behalf of the mayor, the council, and the people of Fountain Hills. Is it on? Okay, there. Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to introduce the three winners of the contest. The winner of the third to fifth grade is Nathan Sanabanez. His poem was entitled "The King." 11 years old, he's in fifth grade, and he attends McDowell Mountain Elementary School. Another winner, sixth to eighth grade, is Oric Nath, and he will be reading his poem for us tonight. A thank you to Dr. King. He's 13 years old, eighth grade, and bases Scottsdale. The winner of ninth to 12th is Shereen Yon, "A Dagger to Hate," 17 years old, 12th grade, bases Scottsdale. I believe you're Oric? Oh, you're Nathan. Are you going to read your poem tonight?
No.
Okay. Is Oric here? Oh, there he is. Okay. Do you have your poem with you? Okay. And even though there'll only be one reading tonight, the other two will be published, I've confirmed, in the Fountain Hills Times. I would recommend you to read them. They'll bring a tear to your eye. They're all very heartfelt.
A thank you to Dr. King. I thank you, Martin Luther King. You have done many amazing things. You have advocated for people's civil rights. Even though you have been arrested 29 times, you still won the legendary Nobel Prize Prize. I thank you, Martin Luther King. You support all races, being very caring, supporting African-American freedom. You helped end a reign of segregation. You don't care about the people of color skins. I thank you, Martin Luther King. You are very daring, yet understanding, campaigning to freedom for all, making all people equal, no hierarchy, ending the rule of racism that is a monarchy. I thank you, Martin Luther King. You have been very inspiring, a true king that can spark ambition and dreams, a helpful role model to everyone, no matter their class or wealth of anyone. I thank you, Martin Luther King. You have given people chances for living, giving people a chance of having a good job. Your empathy shines bright like a star, ending the deadly racism that is war. I thank you, Martin Luther King. Your soothing voice is unique and interesting, capable of many different elegant things, a person sharper than the sharpest knife, giving hope to everyone about a healthy life. I thank you, Martin Luther King. Your nonviolent way to do dangerous things, a peaceful way to fight a violent cause, leading boycotts to give people freedom, a true king. I personally thank you, Martin Luther King. Thank you.[876.43][876.43][applause]
Thank you so much. And here's a certificate of award for you, for Nathan. And then Shereen, does she have parents or anybody here? There you go. You can come up if you'd like, and then let me, while you're still up here, let me read the official proclamation from the Town of Fountain Hills. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King devoted his life to advancing equality, social justice, and opportunity for all, and challenged all Americans to participate in the never-ending work of building a more perfect union. Whereas Dr. King's tireless leadership through nonviolent resistance, including the Montgomery Bus Boycott and the March on Washington, ignited a nationwide movement that forever changed the course of American history. Whereas Dr. King's most powerful and enduring message was delivered on August 28, 1963, in his iconic "I Have a Dream" speech, which he called for an America where individuals will be judged not on the color of their skin, but on the content of their character. Whereas Dr. King's legacy continues to inspire later civil rights activism and ongoing efforts to build a just society with equal rights and opportunities for all Americans. Whereas the third Monday in January is designated as a national holiday in remembrance of Dr. Martin Luther King's birthday. And whereas the Town of Fountain Hills honors Dr. King's courageous leadership in the civil rights movement and his vision of hope and justice for the future, now I, therefore, Mayor Jerry M. Friddell, along with the Council of Fountain Hills, Arizona, do hereby proclaim
Thank you. Very nicely done. The next thing on our agenda is the call to the public, and I'll remind everybody that you're allowed three minutes. Town clerk, do we have any speakers?
Yes, sir. First is Shelby Blacker.
Councilmembers, staff. Yesterday was a really good day in America, and today is a really good day in Fountain Hills, except I feel that Fountain Hills still has a bit of a black eye and a little bit of a bloody nose, and it has to do with this mask, severed head issue that we were all talking about for a long time. And I feel the town needs an apology from those who had the bad taste to do that thing, not because of freedom of speech or freedom of expression, but because we, as residents of the town, should defend the town and do what's right for the town. I know somebody on the council member must know who these people were, and I would like to see them have a conversation with them and issue an apology to the town. The other thing I'd like to talk about is, I'm going to give you the names of some projects, and you're not going to know what these are, but I'll wrap this up in a bow, and you'll understand a little bit later. 2035 Mobility Plan, the Vision Zero Plan, Uplift Melrose, Traffic Circles, 15 Minute Cities, the Hollywood Community Plan, the Greater Wilshire Community Plan. What do all these things have in common, aside from me arguing against all or a portion of them? At some point in their existence, they all had to go through a city planner. So city planners have a very big position in what comes to council. So me, as a resident, I listen to what all of you have to say, and when someone stands up and says, "I would like it to be known that I submitted to very highly qualified people to the town, and they were overlooked," well, I'll go back at all those other projects, and I say, "Well, if those projects were put forward by someone who was moderately progressive, Uplift Melrose would have gone through." It did get to the city councilman, but I think what happened here was, in a matter of good decision, the town decided to elect someone who actually had their finger on the pulse of the town, Matthew Corrigan, and I think that was the right decision. So I just want it to be known that we do hear you, and what you say matters, but I don't think comments like "I just want it to be known," they feel like a little bit of grandstanding to me, and I don't think they have a place here. I think we need to do what's good for the town.
Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'd like to thank the Town of Fountain Hills, the town manager, Goodwin, Mayor Jerry Friddell, and other council members and staff who supported raising the flags to full staff in acknowledgement and honor of the incoming President of the United States on January 20. Thank you also to the local businesses and residents who did the same. Raising the flag for one day during the 30-day period of mourning for a former president in no way dishonored that president. The death of a former president overlapping the inauguration of an incoming president within the same 30-day period of mourning was unusual, and common sense needed to prevail, and it did. It would have been an unacceptable sign of disrespect to a new president to leave the flags at half-staff during the inauguration of President Trump, so a pause was proper and warranted. After flying at full staff yesterday, flags appropriately returned to half-staff today for former President Carter. Similar actions were also carried out by numerous other locations across the United States, including California, to fulfill the Flag Code proclamation guidelines from the days of Eisenhower.
Town clerk, are there any other speakers?
Mr. Mayor and council members, I live close to Sunridge Drive, and when the third water break was on Sunridge Drive, when the water had broken again and the street was closed and everything, I decided I would go and ask what was the problem, because it didn't seem like anybody in the city or anybody else was paying any attention. So I visited with the men who were fixing the water problem for the third time. They said to me, the problem was, now, I'm not an engineer, I'm like really nobody, I don't know anything about this, but I do ask questions. And I said, "Why is this being repaired now for the third time, which is inconveniencing the people in Sunridge, Kansas, inconveniencing the people who drive on that road, is inconveniencing the man who owns the golf course, on and on?" They said, "Because they put in the wrong-sized pipe, because the pipe is not able to handle the water in the hills, in Fountain Hills. We need a bigger pipe that's going to get the water up over the hills so it doesn't keep breaking." Now, is this rocket science? So now this afternoon, this morning and this afternoon, I'm driving, and I see these little barriers. I don't see anybody working out there, and you've got a sign that's directing traffic, which a lot of people, I drive, and they're very confused, they don't know where to go. I mean, they're not sure if they don't know our town, you know, if they're staying at the hotel, they look very confused about where they should go. So I've got a few questions. I'm like, first of all, I think it's a great inconvenience. Have you interviewed the construction crew about what is the problem and why? It looks to me like it's the very same place that the pipe broke before, and this is a major intersection to come in and out of our town. So what is the issue with that? What policies have you put in place about Epcore? Is Epcore paying any financial issue for this? This is probably, I think there are three that have broken, and this one that's broken now. So this would be about a total of six, and I'm like, "Why isn't Epcore on this, and what are we doing to punish them so they don't do this again?" Money talks to Epcore, and we should not have to pay for that. And I think it took me today an extra 10 minutes to get around the barrier to where I had to go, and it's like, and you multiply that times all the people that drive that road, which is a lot, I know you've got the studies to show that, and I think this is inexcusable. What conversations did the city have with Epcore on Sunday morning? Why is anybody out there working? And let's see, the Arizona Corporate Commission would be the people that would be the police of Epcore, and I think maybe it's time to involve them in this. Maybe our previous mayor didn't view this as important, and obviously, they have not paid a lot of attention to our water in Fountain Hills, or this would not be happening again and again. I mean, one time, we could understand. Five or six times plus, I know there are other times I'm not even listing. Who is responsible for the barriers? Is Epcore paying for the barriers, or are we paying for the barriers? And who is, and of course, if they're paying for them, they're going to say, "We're all going to pay for them with our money," which is not right either. And how long is this going to be blocked off? When is this going to be fixed? When are you going to make sure it doesn't happen again? And I'm like really annoyed about it, as a lot of people in town are. They aren't all here tonight to talk about it, but I am.
Thank you.
And I wanted to express that, and I want you to do something about it.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if we could, not address it now, but I wonder if town manager could maybe just raise the flag at Epcore, you know, ask some questions, and maybe give some feedback.
Sure, I appreciate that. If I'm not mistaken, I actually believe we have a meeting on the books with Epcore next week, so I'll be happy to share an update.
Yeah, we do. We'll take care of it. Thank you. Town clerk, any other speakers?
Good evening. Liz Gildersleeve, Fountain Hills resident. I am hopeful that our new and improved council and new mayor can strengthen a couple of ordinances that, while passed by the previous mayor and council, were weak in some instances and could have provided more protection for residents and small businesses. First, I am hopeful that this council can take a relook at the group home ordinance. We, the people, wanted provisions for unannounced inspections to group homes by the town to ensure that operators were complying with occupancy limits, for example. Without the ability to inspect, there really is no way to see that our ordinance is being respected. Additionally, we, the people, had also requested that operators maintain certain liability insurance requirements to protect neighboring homeowners. Second, a strong and robust broadband ordinance is still needed, and decisions shouldn't be made until we have it. Unfortunately, the last mayor and some on this council and staff interfered with the Planning and Zoning Commission's ability to create a protective ordinance by withholding information from them. Just like with group home ordinances or the group home ordinance, this ordinance has a direct impact on quality of life and property values. Third, the sign ordinance is still too burdensome for small businesses and even private citizens as I experienced personally during the last campaign season. The sign ordinance may even be in violation of constitutional free speech protections that were unfortunately ignored by some of you. Finally, I wanted to thank Councilman Skilicorn for bringing the urban camping and panhandling ordinances to the forefront last year. And while most of us appreciate having these protections, I'm wondering why the ordinances are not being enforced. Do they need to be strengthened as well? Images shared recently on social media that show disturbing images around our town of people who apparently refuse services but continue to break the law seemingly without consequences by law enforcement. I would appreciate it if Captain Kratzner and this council can address this in his next update to you. Thank you for your attention tonight.
Any other speakers, town clerk?
Not for call to the public.
Next on our agenda is our consent items. I think we have one item. If there's no issue with that, can I get a motion for approval?
Still moved.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Aye.
Councilmember Kelly Vianakis.
Aye.
Councilmember Watts.
Aye.
Councilmember McMahon.
Aye.
Councilmember Skilicorn.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Toth.
Aye.
Mayor Friddell.
Aye.
Sub New Zero. Sub New Zero.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move to our regular agenda item, and the first item 8A is public hearing and presentation on the fiscal year '23 and '24 development impact audit fee. I see Paul is up and ready to go.
All right, good night. Mayor and council, excuse my voice, I'm still getting over a sickness, but I'm happy to be here tonight. I'm just introducing the subject matter, and I'll actually turn it over in just a minute. Basically, our fiscal year '23 and '24 development impact fees were just audited. The audit was just completed as required by statute, posted on the town's website. And we have Kevin Burnett here tonight from Willdan Financial Services who completed the audit. He'll be providing a brief presentation and overview of the audit results, and he'll be here available for any questions that you might have. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kevin.
Thank you. Good to be with you all tonight. So as Paul said, I was the one responsible for doing the audit for your impact fees. So while it is considered an audit, I don't particularly like that term. Audit has a certain connotation to it, but that's not what we're doing in this study. This is more of a check-in process from our perspective of how is the town progressing through the impact fee report, the impact fee study that was done. So with that, as Paul mentioned, you do have development impact fees. They are subject to the Arizona State statutes. They allow you to assess an impact fee to offset the cost of new development, and as part of that, every two years, you have to go through an audit to see how you're progressing through, through the study. So we looked at the, at the study that was prepared in January 21 of 2020. It was prepared by Tischler-Bice. One of the statute components is if you've conducted the study, you're not allowed to audit your own work. It has to be two independent bodies. So Tischler-Bice did the study itself, and then I'm auditing it. So we completed the audit towards the tail end of last year, towards the tail end of 2024. Your current impact fees are Parks and Recreation, Fire and EMS, and Streets. So the objectives of the audit, so we have to look at four different things. We have to look at the land use assumptions. So is there consistency between the capital needs and the development that's coming in? So if you were to build 100 new homes, did you build five fire stations? That would be a little bit extreme to build five fire stations for 100 new homes. The infrastructure improvement plan, or IIP, so was the system expanded to accommodate growth? So you're allowed to use your impact fees to offset the cost of new development, but you can't use it for repair and replacement capital. The third piece is the expenditures. This goes hand in hand with number two. Did you spend money on eligible items, or were they for repair and replacement? The level of service, so whatever your community is experiencing today in terms of police station, or fire stations per 1,000 residents, or whatever metric, acres of park per 1,000 residents, did you maintain that relationship going forward? And then the fifth one is not required under the state statute, but it's something that we do, just making sure that the permits that were issued were entered correctly and we didn't incorrectly charge new development. So in terms of the results, reviewing the land use assumptions, we did find some minor differences between actual and projected. This was done, as I said, back in 2020, so we're four years in. It was a crystal ball at the time of what do we think development's going to look like? Your actual development for the two-year period came in a little bit less than what was projected at the time, but overall, we're looking at a 10-year snapshot, so that's what we're concerned with, was, is the development over the next 10 years appropriate? The same thing with the infrastructure improvement plan. What was anticipated to occur, the way the study was done, was it made an assumption of a certain amount of spending per new resident that came into the town? So because our development didn't occur as projected, the expenditures also didn't occur as was projected in the plan. With that said, you did make some expenditures during the two-year period, and they were all on eligible items, so there were no inappropriate expenditures. The level of service review, so this is something that's constantly going to be in flux. So if you build one new home, your level of service has decreased because you've built a new home and there's now somebody else using your facilities. By the same token, if you build a new fire station, if you build a new park, you've now increased your level of service until the development catches up with it. So it's always going to be in flux. So based on the fact that we had some new development, we didn't have the matching expenditures, there was a little bit of shift in, in the level of service. And then the final piece, we looked at all the permits that were issued between '23 and '24 and found that they were all issued appropriately. We didn't have a single family that was charged the multifamily fee. We didn't have an industrial development that was charged the commercial fee. Everything was appropriate. So as far as we're concerned, everything was conducted and consistent with, with the state statutes, and you're, you're on track with where you should be for the, for the study. With that, if there's any questions?
Do any council members have any questions? Councilman Watts?
Thank you for the presentation, but I also agree that the term audit doesn't really apply. It really is a review.
It is.
And you made that quite clear in your introductory statements. But I do, I was curious about statistical relevance. You mentioned it, but you didn't have any quantity. Normally, even in a review, statistical relevance is established by certain number of invoices, a certain number of projects that are looked at and then used as the baseline. How many of those did you actually pull to validate the accuracy?
Of the permits themselves?
Yes.
All of them?
All of them?
All of them, yes.
So it's not statistically relevant, it's accurate?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else? All right, I'm going to open the public hearing for this agenda item, and it is for the Town Clerk at 6:21.
Yes, sir. No comments.
No comments? Okay. And then there's no comments, so then we'll close the meeting at 6:21 as well. And our next item is a public, also going to be a public hearing on possible action amending Chapter 12 of the Commercial Zoning Districts and zoning ordinance by adding provisions to allow outdoor display of vehicles of no more than one ton in a C1 neighborhood, commercial and professional zoning district with an approved special use permit. And I see Farhad, you're up to tell us about that.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council before, good to be before you. Start my presentation here, and I'll start talking. So this proposed text amendment is the result of council direction last November to look at the current status of the zoning ordinance as it relates to displays, displaying vehicles outdoors. And so, a little bit of background, so indoor displays of vehicles, whether it's a golf cart or a pickup or minivan, is currently allowed by right in four of the five commercial zoning districts, and they're spelled out here in a sequence of intensity, beginning with the C1, CC district, which is community commercial, and then all the way up to C3, which is general commercial. So that's, that pertains to indoor displays, allowed as a matter of right in those districts. Outdoor displays of vehicles, again, regardless of size, is allowed by right in the C3 zoning district. It is allowed in the C2 zoning district with an approved special use permit by Town Council and is prohibited in the CC and C1 zoning districts. I want to provide some further background as, regarding the sequence of events that led to this, the crafting of this zoning ordinance text amendment. So originally, back in October, there was a rezone request that was brought before initially to the Planning and Zoning Commission. It was a request from a local business owner, Fountain Hills Golf Carts, whose business is located at the northeast corner of Glenbrook and Fountain Hills Boulevard. His request was to rezone from a C1 to a C2 at that commercial corner, because that was really the only pathway that the zoning ordinance would allow to have outdoor displays of vehicles, including golf carts. The rezone was recommended for denial by commission and then subsequently denied by the council meeting, or rather, by the Town Council, the November 19 meeting, but that was also followed by direction from the council to look into the possibility of allowing it in the less intense commercial zoning districts by way of a text amendment and other mechanisms that, you know, that could be explored. Council followed with a direction to staff to propose a text amendment for outdoor golf cart displays in C1. Now, there were some considerations that followed by staff. We looked at size of golf carts. Typically, what do they, how do they arrange in size? Well, a four-seater golf cart, it can weigh anywhere between 400 to 550 pounds. This is according to our cursory research. And a six-seater can weigh as much as 1,850 pounds. So we looked at the possibility of perhaps rounding up to one ton or 2,000 pounds, and also kind of in anticipation of similar interest in displaying outdoor vehicles. We looked at what other vehicles are there that are similar size and shape and weight. We've, you know, possibly go-karts, electric power, go-karts or even pedicabs, many of which don't run on any power whatsoever. We also looked like, looked at what are the likely areas in which these vehicles can be displayed. We looked, most likely, it would be a parking stall or two, certainly not right out front in front of an entrance, and preferably not in an unpaved area. And we also asked the question, you know, should we consider allowing it, allowing outdoor displays in a C1 as a by-right use or an SUP? And so staff formulated a, initially, this text amendment request that was brought before the commission a number of once, a number of months ago. We concluded that we, that perhaps the best route to go is to allow a outdoor vehicle displays of vehicles weighing up to one ton in the C1 zoning district with a special use permit. This would allow the commission and council to scrutinize the details of the request and also look at it on a case-by-case basis to see whether or not a specific site is appropriate for that type of use, given how close it is to residential uses and the like. So this was the, the language that was proposed to the commission. There was, after a number of questions and answers between the commission and staff, the language was reformulated as such. And I'll read it out verbatim and then explain some of it in a little bit more detail. But it begins with addressing the C1 zoning district only. Outdoor display of vehicles of no more than one ton can be displayed with a special use permit in the C, in the C1 zoning district. Non-gasoline vehicles may be approved without limitations. And again, the operative word here is "may." Like I said earlier, we may, will come before you, and we'll look at this at a case-by-case basis. Staff will analyze it accordingly, and the decision will be left up to the commission and council. The special use permit may allow outdoor display of gasoline-powered vehicles of less than one ton for no more than 30 days, provided such vehicles will not be operated during this time. Now, this stemmed from a discussion, let me back up a bit. Most golf carts nowadays are supported by electrical battery-powered engines. The question came up from the local business owner, "Well, you know, I'd like to take in some gas-powered golf carts and, for trade-in." And so there was some accommodation made by way of modifying the text amendment request as such here, where no more than 30 days, provided such vehicle will not be operated during this time if it's a gas-powered vehicle. And finally, all displayed vehicles allowed under the special use permit must be removed when the business ceases under the business license for the operation. The language is broad, but it allows, again, the council the ability or the liberty to tailor a use permit and pertinent stipulations based on specifics of the case. So with that, I'll end my presentation and open up to questions and invite discussion.
Councilmember Earl.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Why, why do you, would you want to restrict a gasoline-powered vehicle?
Good question, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, Councilmember Earl, excuse me. We looked at some of the, I guess, unwanted impacts that may possibly be generated from gasoline-powered vehicles. Some vehicles, no matter how small or large, may have diesel engine, which, you know, often generates noise, and considering that C1 zoning districts are typically adjacent to a lot of neighborhoods, it might, it might generate some, you know, nuisances, undesired impacts. So we initially limited to non-gas-powered vehicles.
Is this just for rental? So, I mean, they're not going to be running, do you leave the vehicles running there in the parking lot?
Again, Mayor, Councilmember Earl, we'll look at it at a case-by-case basis. If, if for whatever reason, a gasoline-powered vehicle, for whatever reason, is, you know, too close to a, you know, someone's backyard or a neighborhood, we can look at that at a case-by-case basis.
What I'm asking is, what, are they going to be used sitting right there at that business?
No, they won't be, they won't be allowed to run their engines at that location.
So, but we're restricting them to, I mean, I mean, we have gasoline cars. We have people using gasoline blowers, we have, so it seems kind of discriminatory, restrictive. Thank you.
Councilmember McMahon.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. I have some concerns with this, so give me a moment to talk about it. I've already asked some questions. You kept saying golf carts. Now, it's my understanding, and I recall, that this business has to do with golf carts. To get such a broad ordinance is a concern to me, because we're talking about golf carts, is my understanding. Now, all of a sudden, this whole thing is opened up to one-ton automobiles, which includes trailers, smart cars, it includes motorcycles, et cetera. To me, if you allow something like this in this limited zoning area, you're turning this into a dealership. And I don't think, personally, that is not what I intended in looking at, relooking at golf carts. I think that, you know, especially in this particular golf cart owner's area, that's a small commercial area. It's in a major, you know, residential area. There's going to be apartments added there and townhouses. It's going to be residential. If I was looking for an apartment, I would not want to be across the street from vehicles being parked outside, trailers, et cetera. I'm not exaggerating, because one-ton vehicles, there's a lot of different ones. So my concern is this is going beyond the scope of what we, what I thought was going to be in the amendment. And also, I think, you know, without limitation, I mean, that, there's, there's no belts and suspenders on this. So without limitation, there's no guidance for staff. And in addition, to add gasoline cars and to have them be set out there for 30 days, who's going to monitor? Who's going to determine the 30 days? Staff doesn't even have time to keep up with code enforcement as it is. So personally, I think this is way too broad. I, I think that it, I would like to see it narrowed down to golf carts or pedicarts, whatever it is, because otherwise, my concern is that this is going to turn into a dealership. And there's other dealership in town with strict requirements. And so I'm, as this is written the way it is and how broad it is, I'm, I'm not going to vote for it.
Councilman Skilicorn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to point out that non-gasoline-powered Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'd like to point out that non-gasoline-powered vehicles would exclude cars, trucks, things like that, motorcycles, so the non-gasoline power does cover it. Mr. Mayor, are you looking for a motion?
Isn't that electric carts? Non, non-gasoline are also electric carts, right? Yes.
One, one at a time.
Well, I wanted to address that when you were not recognized.
Mr. Mayor, are you looking for a motion?
Not just yet, I have Council, Councilmember, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Toth.
I do want to comment. I believe that the broadness of this ordinance was so that the council would be able to review each item case-by-case, is that a nod? Yeah. So, being able to review this case-by-case is obviously very important. In that case, I do want a broader ordinance. If we pigeonhole ourselves into very specific language, we end up needing a different SUP for a different person, or we can't accept this one because it doesn't quite fit. And so, this broad ordinance gives us that ability for the seven of us to make the decision that's best for the town on top of that, with the concerns of something becoming a dealership. I am not aware of Fountain Hills Golf Carts selling any trailers or vehicles or smart cars, vehicles, that was dumb, smart cars. On top of that, if something were to be a dealership, do we have any dealerships that are expected to enter our C1s?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Toth, there may be dealerships, but they're, they are entirely indoors in the C, if they are in the C1, and in fact, I think there's one down by Suaro and Shea in the Red Rock Business Center.
Okay, so, those being entirely indoors and this limit to one ton, you still need the SUP that is determined by the council. So, I think this is great. I mean, we're voting case-by-case. If we realize that something isn't going to look right, it's going to be a nuisance, that's our job, that is what we do.
Councilmember McMahon.
Thank you very much. A one-ton, if you do research on one-ton vehicles that are electric and non-powered, they include all the vehicles that I spoke about. Vehicles is a generic term, it doesn't just apply, apply to golf carts. And I do still think that this is, even though council can look at the SUPs on this, I still think there need, it need, we need more guidance in statute, that's what I think.
Vice Mayor.
I think staff needs it.
Thank you. I would like to therefore make a motion to approve.
Before you do that, I need to open up a public hearing for that.
Oh.
But before we do that, I'm just going to weigh in. I sat through, I think it was two or three planning and zoning meetings, and this guy isn't going to be sitting and dealing with gas-powered vehicles. He might take one in on a trade, but he's going to get rid of it right away. So I don't think we have an issue with that hanging out at that location. But right now, if there's no other comments, I'm going to open up a public, public hearing.
I do have a comment. I mean, given what you said, having been in on that, and the guy's not interested in gas-powered, why are we including it then? I mean, I just, I just think this is screamed dealership to me, that's all there is to it.
I, I understand your, your point, and it's, and it, and it could be valid, but he's, he's turning those over, he's not, he's dealing in electric golf carts, he doesn't want gas-powered stuff there. There may be one that shows up in a trade-in, and he's going to ship it out. All right, if there's no more comments, I'm going to open up a public hearing, and for the town clerk, it's 6:39, are there any public comments?
No, none submitted.
Okay. And then I'll close the public hearing at 6:39 as well, and then if there's any other comments from the council, I'll, I'll take a motion.
Move to adopt ordinance 25-01.
Second. Roll call, please, town clerk.
Councilmember Earl.
Aye.
Councilmember Calaviannakis.
Aye.
Councilmember Watts.
Aye.
Councilmember McMahon.
Nay.
That was no? Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Skilicorn?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Toth?
Aye.
Mayor Fidel?
Aye.
Six to one, in favor.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is 8C, and as Erin mentioned earlier, if anybody in the audience came to speak on that subject, we'll listen to your comments. It has been withdrawn from the agenda, though. Are there any comments out there for that?
Yes, sir. You had four submittals against, you have one request for public comment.
You almost got away from hearing me tonight by withdrawing it, but I'm still going to do it. Lori Troller, resident. I want to point out a few things about this. Attached in, one of the attachments in this agenda item is, it's the seventh, it's the second from the bottom, it's called the Citizen Participation Report. I don't know if that's a technical term, my expectation of what that is would be, what did the public come up and present? What, what was the, because this, this application required that the people that live around this church be notified, and they were, but they all got together and they presented at the planning and zoning meeting, and it was a substantial amount of people, there were written statements, and they were all very much against us, nobody was for the tower. So when I see this being presented as a package, and it says Citizen Participation Report, when you open that link, it goes to the item above it, which is the Citizen Participation Plan. That is this, it's a three little page thing, and it just shows what they plan to give out to the people. This is not sufficient stuff to be considering applications for, so this is going to come back up again, hopefully that is something that is addressed, but I just want to bring to your attention, because it doesn't always, that there was a large public outcry on this, and it was a big no. So if you guys don't see that, if you don't have visibility to it, it needs to be understood, because this is not represented here. The other thing that this agenda item had on it was a map of the towers that is not, this is not provided by the applicant, I believe John had put this map together. I have issues with this map. When you look at this map, you would think, if you were, do what I do, I took every one of those little dots and figured out who it was, where it was, all that kind of stuff. So there's really, this is stating that there's 44 structures in the town. That's a tower. A tower can have 12, 15 antennas on it. It's not the tower that's the concern, that's not what's emitting stuff from the antennas, it's the number of antennas. So when you look at this map, and this map was provided as information to you to, hey, this is what we have in town, this is not something that you can look at and say, oh, that's all that is. Because if you actually look at this and you do a conservative estimate of how many antennas can be on these 44 structures, it's over 200. So that's a big deal. I just wanted to point those things out, and if I, real quick, also on that church tower is another vendor and its voice stream, and that wasn't even mentioned in here. I don't know if they're going to put new antennas on or anything like that, that was never addressed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other speakers? No, okay. We'll move on to 8D, and that's Review of Existing Ordinances, Resolutions, and Documents Associated with Provision of Wireless Communication Services and Possible Direction to Town Staff Regarding an Approach to Revising These Regulations. And I think John is on deck.
Yes, Mayor, thank you very much. I've got a very brief presentation just to run through some of the things that were in the staff report, just so the public is aware, in case they haven't had a chance to look at that. Excuse me. So first of all, Town Council asked us to put together, excuse me, a document for them to look at, to see what all the current regulations are that we have in place, to help you, as you consider what adjustments we might need to make to better meet the needs of the town. So there are several places, first of all, and primarily is Chapter 17 of the zoning ordinance. This relates to all towers and antennas, except those that get placed in, in street right-ofways, regardless of small cell, macro towers, 5G, 4G, whatever it is, all towers and antennas, except those in the right-ofway. Initially adopted by the town in 1997, and then substantially updated last year. Next, we have Town Code Section 16-2. Chapter 16 of the Town Code addresses streets and sidewalks, everything that is within the right-ofway. So Section 16-2 deals specifically with the small cell wireless regulations that go in the right-ofway. This was adopted in 2018, following state doing some preemptive work and placing regulations, restrictions on what towns can do with regard to small cell, the right-ofway, and has specific definitions of those types of towers and antennas, specifically limiting the antenna to eight cubic feet or smaller. And then along with that ordinance, Resolution 2018-18 was also adopted by the Town Council, which had a number of documents attached to that, Wireless Facilities Agreement, Wireless Facility Standard Conditions, Terms and Conditions, the revocable letter of credit requirement, assumption of wireless lease agreement, and the P's. Then also in Town Code Section 16-3, we have regulations that deal with the utility of service antennas in the right-ofway. These were adopted in 2024 as part of the review that we did last year of the various towers and antennas. So this regulates antennas installed by utility companies within the right-ofway that are communicating within their system. And then finally, we have the Arizona State Statute requirements on small cell antennas. It's not a town document, but it relates very much to what we do in 16-2, and how the small cell wireless antennas are handled. And so they set various parameters, one of which is local zoning regulations are limited in their ability to address those. So with that information in hand, we understand what the council's looking for, then is how we might move forward. And so we put together just a few ideas, things that we think are important, as you consider this and giving us direction. First of all, we need a clear statement of what it is the council's looking for and what you want to try to accomplish. And here are just a few questions that we need to have some clarity on, you know, what work you're wanting to do. There's been discussion about the possible designation of a council member to take a lead role in this, that staff can then work with as we sort through the issues and needs of the town. And finally, the potential need to retain a consultant, as been pointed out previously as we discussed this topic, when it comes to just the basic regulations, as we've done them thus far. Staff has a good background in those basic regulations, but from what we're hearing discussed by the public and by the Planning and Zoning Commission to some degree, and this council, there's some technical issues with regard to frequencies and broadband versus voice, and how those are handled, that does get very technical, and so retaining a consultant help work through those issues, if that's where council wants to go, probably would be beneficial. Questions you have for me at this point?
Any councilmember, Councilmember Earl?
If no one has any questions, I'd like to make a motion.
Are we going to be able to discuss it?
Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, you do have public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. So before we get a motion, let's, let's see what the public has to say.
Dave Long. Linda Frazier.
So as you're discussing sending the wireless ordinance back to P&amp;Z, I'd like to point out two really important things that we want to make sure P&amp;Z doesn't overlook. So this is in addition to what John was, his list. So we know that emissions from these antennas are pollution, and we already have pollution in the town, and it's not measured in any way, and we have zero understanding of how much we already have in town. So, we do have residents that are quite sensitive to this pollution, and over the last three years, you've heard them speak in this room. So right now, the town has no practice to measure or to regulate this pollution, let alone use it in our ordinance to maintain public safety. So when the applications come in, they are not considered as additional pollution to what we already have in probably some of the hotter spots in town. So to piggyback on this, there are different industries implementing pollution into our town, and in my opinion, since the amount of pollution that we already have from the cellular antennas is already high, we should strictly protect our community from antenna pollution from other non-cellular antennas. So all this dovetails into the map that I was just speaking about before, that John's provided in a previous agenda item. That map is dated two weeks ago, January 9th, and it's not correct. And so when you hand this off to P&amp;Z, it's giving them the wrong impression. We need to make sure that what we're handing P&amp;Z is correct. So, let me see, I think I, I can misduplicate, so for example, the map, the states, it states that there's 44 antennas, or 44 structures, that, you know, we can possibly have the 200 antennas, and I just went through that earlier, so that map is misleading, so we have to make sure that that map, it's a great source of information and it's correct. So please insist that the information given P&amp;Z is correct. Also, we have to make sure that it's complete. One thing that is not handed off, that was mentioned, was Section 23, I think it was 19 or 18, it was the, the Utilities Ordinance for SRP to put the towers up. That was not in that packet, this, what we should be handing off to P&amp;Z is everything wireless. Have them put together one ordinance, if it's wireless, you open that ordinance up, and then there's the categories, it's utilities, it's a radio, it's communications, it's broadband, whatever it is. So that means that everything you give them should be included, and that was the lesson we learned on the last time, because the last time it got choked down to only Chapter 17, because the council didn't declare absolutely everything that needed to go. So we have to make sure that what they're getting is correct, and it's complete. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Earl? I'm sorry, is there any other speakers, town clerk?
No, sir. May I make the motion?
Sure.
And then there's discussion, okay.
I'm sorry.
What, and discussion afterwards, or, yes?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. I move to send back to Planning and Zoning the review of existing ordinances, resolutions, and documents associated with the provisions of wireless communication services to revise these regulations, to designate Councilman Watts to be the point of contact with Planning and Zoning and staff, and have input with regards to finding one or more consultants to assist with the process of reviewing this topic, and to release the Campanelli Consultant Report for Planning and Zoning and for the public. Second.
Councilman Watts?
I think before we vote, I want to take a step back from where Director Wesley's presentation was, I'm going to call it a 25,000-foot level, I want to go back up to 50,000 feet, and, and want to make a couple of statements about that. One, I really want to know what we've got today, what we've got, where they're at, so categorize and catalog existing towers, their applications, by whose use, and so on. Secondly, I want to make sure that we modify, I haven't seen an application yet for any tower that goes in, but I might, my assumption is that there is an application, reading the code, the ordinances, there are applications, and we even have the right to be able to go and look at the output from the various towers, measure them, but we don't do anything with that data. So I think there's probably, at a very high level, between 50 and 100 things that an application ought to have to make it inclusive, so that we know exactly what we've got. And then finally, I don't want to lose sight of the fact that this is all for the intent of not prohibiting towers in town, but managing them logically, reasonably, to maximize distances, to protect property, protect values, protect health and welfare of the residents. And with that, I just want to make sure that we're approaching this logically, so we get a good output.
Councilmember McMahon. Councilwoman Brenda Kay.
Did you pass it over to me?
No.
Thank you, Councilwoman, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for recognizing me.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for recognizing me. In my estimation, this is a, an unfortunate thing that we're bringing this back after dealing with this for two years and writing what was a reasonable ordinance when the last council. This seems to me like it's a solution that is looking for a problem. Consulting with the town attorney and the discussion by Director Wesley, Arizona Vice Statutes 9591 to 900 restricts us from dealing with small cell towers, period. That's Chapter 16 of our code, period. We don't even need small cell towers, because we don't have the density in Fountain Hills to require small cell towers. When we took this up in the last council, we were told that this is all covered by federal and state statute, which it is. We could do minor modifications, like we can have it three feet from the mailbox instead of two feet from the mailbox, and we can tweak around the edges, but this is simply beyond the scope of this council to rewrite the telecommunications law. It's, they want to designate a member of this council, and I don't know where that came from, it just showed up on their agenda. I don't know if that came from council members discussing it with our town manager and our developmental services manager, I don't know where it came from. It was just dropped in the agenda. I thought that's what we were going to discuss this week, I didn't think it would be agendized. That being, as is said, the mayor and the council are not policymakers, we are policymakers. It is not our role to direct staff, which is, the suggestion here would be this council member would be working directly with staff, working directly with a hired consultant, and would be working directly with a hired outside attorney. This is clearly a violation of basically our ethics code. When I simply suggested that a sign was up on Shea Avenue that was not in compliance with our town code, and I sent it to Rachel and to John Wesley, I was up on ethics charges that I was trying to manipulate the town's staff and order them around, and that was simply for suggesting an email that any citizen of this town could have sent. So I know it's out there, that they know we can't direct staff. But this case goes way beyond an email to a staff member. By appointing a council member to work with staff, it's a euphemism for being able to order the staff around, because the two are not on parity. One is an elected official, and one is a paid staffer. An elected official working with staffers would be very intimidating to those very staffers, and they would be compelled to do the bidding of the chosen council member, a super legislator that would be above the mayor and this council, working with all these outside parties and staff. This council, the council member, there would be a fear of retribution, that if the staff or if the outside attorney or consultant didn't do what the super legislature would want, they could have their contract terminated and lose money, or they could possibly be fired. An elected official working with a hired outside advisor, attorney, would be compelled to do the bidding of the one, not the seven. After all, they hired help, and they can be fired for disagreeing with the person in charge. If we are foolish enough to appoint this chosen one, it should be somebody with legal experience. Not that I want the job, okay, but I do seem to fit the description. Somebody that would take the most conservative approach to writing a telecommunications ordinance. Need I remind you that the town of Fountain Hills has already received a legal letter from AT&amp;T threatening to sue us? The proponents of this rewrite of the telecommunications ordinance are already on the record. They want to push the boundaries and write the most aggressive ordinance that the telecommunications industry would use and would be a model for other municipalities across the country. That's not what we should be doing. We should be protecting this town from lawsuits, not opening it up to lawsuits. And let me caution this body and the people of Fountain Hills today. We have been warned by AT&amp;T and our own lawyers that this area is covered by national and state law. There is little we can regulate here, like I said before, except a little around the edges. We have been warned that pushing this too far would result in the writing of an illegal ordinance. What does that mean? Well, it means the town of Fountain Hills would be sued by a telecommunications giant with very deep pockets. It also means if we pass an illegal ordinance, after being warned of its invalidity, our insurance pool would not be compelled to cover the claim. This can be verified with our town attorney. Illegal ordinances knowingly passed would not be covered by the insurance pool. This is similar to a Department of Corrections employee that's doing a bunk search in a prison, and they drop a microwave oven on the floor. The prisoner doesn't sue the Department of Corrections, they sue the correctional officer, because dropping the microwave and breaking it isn't a part of their course of duty. It's not a part of our course of duty to pass illegal ordinances, and so they would deny coverage, and so that would leave the town of Fountain Hills on the hook for a lawsuit by an AT&amp;T telecommunications giant, and they hire the best lawyers. The citizens and the taxpayers of this Fountain Hills would pay the attorney's cost, not the insurance carriers. This would blow a hole in our budget, and it would result in cutting back on road repairs and town services. If it's the wish of this body to proceed with this agenda item, it is imperative that it is addressed by the entire council, not the super legislature that is on the motion tonight. It has always been the policy of this council to work collectively, together as a body, to gather information from all council members and to make good decisions. Let's continue that time-honored tradition. This new administration has promised transparency, and it said the old, the old administration had too many executive sessions. This seems to me the ultimate in nontransparency, to have one person that even the seven doesn't get to participate, to participate, again, with staff, attorneys, and advisors. So I would vehemently vote against this.
Before I call the next council member, I have two points I'd like to make on your speech. One, a council member has no right or jurisdiction to fire any town employee. The town manager runs the employees of this town, plain and simple. Second, no ordinance has been written, no illegal ordinance has been written, and I think the collaboration between an appointed council member and town staff would ensure the fact that it wouldn't be an illegal ordinance. That's just my two cents on it. And now I'll call on Vice Mayor Toth.
Oh, let me.
I'm sorry. Councilmember McMahon.
Thank you very much. When I saw this, it really concerned me for a lot of reasons, reasons that Councilmember Cavanox has just said, plus my own personal reasons as an experienced council member. This is asking us, it looks like, to somehow appoint or recommend one of the council members to act as a spokesperson for us. You know, I don't need a spokesperson. And we recently passed the 5G ordinance in September, which has not yet been fully implemented, and therefore it seems premature to me to suggest that a new ordinance requires revisions or revocation at this time. You know, this particular agenda item is asking us to, you know, look at topics involved to address concerns about clarity, et cetera. We've already done that, whether to designate a member of the council to serve as a primary point and interface, whether the town would benefit from retaining services of another consultant. As far as a consultant, a consultant was already hired. We spent over $8,000 on that consultant, but the outcome was ineffective. It resulted in a significant waste of our time and wasted town money. Plus, we learned during that process that there was only one more experienced attorney who could address 5G wireless and wireless communications, and four existing council members up here voted against that person. So we're not going to have a consultant. The proposal to prevent council members from communicating with staff and outside council members, outside council and consultants, you know, it's really problematic to me. It is the council's responsibility to hire and interact with consultants and advisors, and to ensure that the town attorney can engage with outside council and report back to all council members, and to maintain open communication with staff. This promotes transparency, minimizes miscommunications, misunderstandings, prevents one-sided conversations on issues that are vital to mayor and council. Council members are expected to ask questions, conduct research, and engage with staff on matters impacting the town, including those related to future agenda items. In my experience, staff appreciates all of our open communication, as each council member offers a unique perspective on important issues that need to be or are being considered by both staff and council. As you all know, I always do my homework and research. I spend time asking the proponent of the agenda item questions, so that I can make educated decisions. I will not stop doing that. Restricting such communication for council members, to me, would be unjust, infringe upon my right to free speech, unduly interfere with my ability to engage with professionals, council staff, which will unreasonably impede my ability to fulfill my duties and responsibilities effectively. It would also prevent us from communicating with the town attorney and receiving the direct and confidential legal advice, of which we are all entitled. Accordingly, I am against this proposal or an appointment of anybody to speak on my behalf. I will, it will not, you know, I won't, I don't plan on allowing somebody else to speak on my behalf. And furthermore, this proposal to select a council member to serve as a point of contact, to me, is unnecessary and unwarranted. It would exclude us and undermine our roles and responsibilities as representatives. And to name an inexperienced council member, Rick Watts, to be this person, I disagree with completely. I have concerns about this for several reasons. In Rick Watts' prior public comments to council, he expressed to me a strong bias about 5G technology. He demonstrated a lack of respect for the council, particularly his disdain for the way that the 5G ordinance and its revisions were made by council. He also disregarded legal advice and council's right to keep certain communications and work products confidential under the well-respected and accepted attorney-client privilege doctrine. He demanded that these documents and communications be made public. And when they were not met, and other things stated, he stood up and said BS and stormed out. That is not respecting council and what the responsibilities of a council member. Lacks decorum, and it, I'm concerned that his approach could be, you know, misplaced, especially in this type of responsibility. The proposal seems another instance of, you know, I hope this has not any political connotations to it, because who's going to make that recommendation? Also, as for Earl's motion, it's overbroad. I don't see anywhere in this agenda item to open and ask or have us be allowed to rule on violating the attorney-client privilege. We haven't had time to think about that, we haven't had time to address it, and it is not before council at this time, based on this agenda item. So I ask that you remove that request from your motion. I think that it's based on attorney-client privilege information, I think that the attorney, town attorney at a minimum, needs time to look at that and discuss it and have a discussion with us about it before it is presented to council for any type of motion or decision whatsoever. It is that important.
Vice Mayor Toth?
There's so many things that I want to respond to, and I really hope that I remember all of them. The first one being, we have had months to consider the attorney-client privilege thing, because we have talked about this before. We have had an executive session on this before. Many of us up here have voted on it before. What I recommend for my fellow council members, who spend a significant amount of time insulting their fellow council members, and one of whom just accused of us, us, of breaking the ethics code, talking to staff, you know why staff wants an appointee? Because when we vote on items, how often is it that certain members of this council march into the office, get in their ear, and tell them the opposite of what the council wanted? We have sent so many mixed messages to our staff, only for them to come to these meetings and get reamed out by those of us who thought we voted, the majority spoke, and this is what we asked for, and didn't realize that there were then two weeks of somebody whispering in their ear. That's going around this council, that's going around the people, and that's taking the right of the people's voice away. Second of all, your right to free speech is at no risk. Nothing is stopping you from asking our staff questions, nothing is stopping you from still providing advice. What we need to do is have someone who represents the voice of this council, who we vote on, by the way, tonight, that's the majority of this council, saying who has the most experience. And I should let Councilmember Watts speak for himself, but I am just incensed by the comments of the person next to me. Councilmember Rick Watts, for those who don't know, has spent hundreds of hours researching this topic. He knows this better than any of us up here. I know I've been working on this for two years, but he knows this topic better than any of us. Thank you.
Councilmember Watts?
Not quite sure where to start, other than Vice Mayor Toth stole my 100-hour spiel. I have spent hundreds of hours. And aside from the emphaticness of the statements, the embellishment of the statements, period, slamming, having a fit, the reality is that the hundreds of hours that I have spent on the technical aspects, do you mind? The technical aspects that of, of the 5G broadband component are extremely complex, and the only thing that I have done along the way is offer what I have learned over time. Offer it to help staff, not to mandate anything, not to act as a super council person. I think that's the most ludicrous thing I've heard in a long time. I think it's silly when the complete intent is to take what Planning and Zoning originally did, a very stringent, very leading ordinance recommendation, gave it to council, and council watered it down. I wanted, my objective would be to get it back to where it was, within the confines of the law, focusing on public safety, the value of your homes, the potential health impacts that there are, all within the confines of the law, and help be liaison between presumably a consultant and town staff. Town staff is extremely knowledgeable about the ordinances and how to write them, and I would just be, I would look at it as being beneficial, sharing what I've learned over time. I don't know that I deserve what I just got from my fellow councilman, but I did, and I'm still willing to offer that service to the best of my ability, not to make law, not to keep anything secret, not to keep it private, to take everybody's input, and to work closely with staff and consultant from a liaison standpoint. Pure and simple. Anything that comes back out of that conversation, that communication, would clearly be presented to council to vote on and to look at once again in detail at nauseam. Thank you.
Councilmember Earl?
I would like to respond to Councilmember McMahon. I will not withdraw my part of this motion to release the Campanelli Consultant Report. Our residents, our town paid $8,500 for that, and by telling everybody, "You can't see it,"
it," that just rubbed a lot of people the wrong way. We want transparency, and if it really didn't mean anything, it was a waste of money, then let them see that waste of money, if it wasn't such a bad thing. So, no, I will not withdraw that.
Councilmember Kelly Vianakis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make it brief, but, you know, this notion that only one of us has put hundreds of hours into this topic and only one of us is prepared to discuss it is ludicrous. I haven't punched the time clock and showed the people how much time I've spent on this thing, but I would willing to wager it's the hundreds of hours that Mr. Watts claimed that he spent. I've watched every Planning and Zoning meeting on this, and I've done a hell of a lot of research on this very subject. If Mr. Watts was such an expert, then he would know that we can't regulate environmental and health effects in any case. Can we, Erin?
Gee, Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity to respond in the middle of this discussion. To directly respond to your question, Councilwoman, we are aware that there is a federal statute on point that discusses not regulating solely on the basis of health, and that likewise there are other limitations placed in federal law on what emissions are allowed and permitted, et cetera. We also know, to the point you made earlier, about state law regarding wireless facilities. So, I hope that answers the question.
In a very lawyer-like manner.
That's the idea.
But I guess what does concern me, and then I'll conclude, is that today in the Fountain Hills Times, there was a letter to the editor that predicted this very thing was going to happen tonight, that Rick Watts was going to be nominated to be the super legislature. This is the worst-kept secret in the town. This seems to smack of cronyism and things that are done in advance, and then they get presented in front of this council to be ratified, okay, by a majority. I was concerned when Matt Corrigan was seated on the Planning and Zoning, and Councilwoman McMahon stated her concerns that she was on that subcommittee, and there were more qualified characters and people that they were looked over, and somebody that ran for council on the rot ticket was appointed, and now somebody that ran for council on the rot ticket is going to be appointed to be the super legislature. I don't think there's any room in this town for cronyism.
I think you're out of order, first of all, by bringing that up. And secondly, what you don't know is I personally interviewed several of those candidates for Planning and Zoning. And the most qualified one, I had a conversation with Councilwoman McMahon. She obviously didn't share it with you, but you obviously shared your speeches together.
No, we didn't.
You wrote them together.
Absolutely not.
Listen.
Absolutely not.
I take offense at the remark. I interviewed several of those candidates myself, and you can ask them. And I did have a conversation, did I not, Councilwoman McMahon, with you?
I voted against it.
Did I not have a conversation with you?
I spoke to you on the phone about what transpired in that committee meeting.
Okay, don't answer the question. Councilman Watts, you have something to say.
Don't be rude. That is very rude and disrespectful.
You're not recognized.
I did answer the question.
You're out of order.
Excuse me, you're out of line.
Stop.
I'm out of line.
You're out of line.
Ladies, please stop.
You're not recognized, and I was having a conversation with the mayor.
Councilman Watts.
As the town attorney stated, we know that there are certain parameters, certain bumpers out there that we can't exceed, but we haven't pushed to that limit yet. And the objective should be, and I don't know where this super-council person comes from, and oh, by the way, it's not Mr. Watts, it's Councilman Watts, if you would. So, I would like to see us move forward to make it more stringent, to increase distances to the maximum, to protect the safety of the town. And if that's objectionable, in your view, I don't know what to tell you. Thank you.
Councilman Skilicorn.
I'd like to make a motion to call the question.
Second. Not done.
So, Mayor and Council, when there's a, when you've moved to call the question, it requires...
Three quarters.
Thank you. Three-quarters vote of the majority. And I'm going to confirm to make sure, because I don't want to be... And it sounds like Rachel has a clarifying question, Mayor, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Just a clarifying question on the motion, because we had a prior consultant, and there is a, the motion includes reinstating another consultant. Are we looking to resume the original consultant or look for someone new?
I assume it's sounding new.
Okay, I just want to clarify.
Mayor?
I don't have any.
I don't know that you can answer that either way at this point. I think it depends on how far working with staff, how far we can get, and if we find that the technicalities, as staff outlined in the presentation, they are complex, we may or may not be able to use the information we've got already. And on the other hand, we may have to engage a consultant, and I think it's premature to say one way or the other.
Okay, that's fair.
I would agree.
I just wanted to clarify so that there was clear expectations, that's all.
Mayor, the motion on the table is to, one, to call the question. Our rules call it the motion to limit or terminate discussion, and I'll read it for the council's benefit. Such a motion shall be used to limit or close debate on or further amendment to the main motion. This is referred to as call for the question, and is the motion used to cut off debate and to bring the group to an immediate vote on the pending motion. It requires a two-thirds vote. The vote shall be taken by voice. If the motion fails, debate shall be reopened. If the motion passes, a vote shall be taken on the main motion. And I took the liberty of pulling out my calculator, so you need five for it to call the question.
But I need a clarification, please. There is nothing in the agenda that speaks to the attorney-client's information, period. It's not in, and it's not before council tonight.
Mayor and Council, I'll respond back by saying you're correct. That does not appear on tonight's agenda.
Correct. So, it can't be part, it's not part of the motion.
It is, it is a part of the motion. It is not on the agenda.
So, how can we discuss it and vote on it?
That's up to the council.
I feel ill-prepared for this because it wasn't brought up ahead of time. It's not on the agenda. Excuse me. And it doesn't matter if we've discussed this before. It wasn't public notice, so we can't even have public comment on it. So, it's inappropriate to have it voted on tonight or considered.
We'll move on with our vote. Roll call, please.
What are we voting on? Okay, thank you. Councilmember Earl. So, please clarify a yes or a no. If I want to say yes, that would mean we're done with discussion?
I mean, we're done, Mayor and Council, if I may interrupt. A yes vote on this means that we will terminate discussion and that we will immediately and without further discussion go to a vote on the main motion, your motion.
Okay, then I'm a yes. Councilmember Kelly Vianakis.
Nay.
Councilmember Watts.
Aye.
Councilmember McMahon. Councilmember Skilicorn.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Toth.
Yes.
Mayor Friddell.
Yes.
Six to one in favor. Sorry, five.
Okay, so Mayor and Council, debate is over. We can call for a vote on the main motion, Mayor.
Roll call, please, on the main motion.
Councilmember Earl. Councilmember Kelly Vianakis. Councilmember Watts.
Aye.
Councilmember Skilicorn.
Yes.
Councilmember McMahon.
No.
Vice Mayor Toth.
Aye.
Mayor Friddell.
Aye.
The vote is five to two in favor.
Next on our agenda is consideration, possible action for the approval of Resolution 2025-01, approving a grant agreement with the United States Department of Transportation, Federal Highway Administration, to receive safe streets and roads for all grants for the town of Fountain Hills. And I think we have Justin coming up for that.
Mr. Mayor, bidon vice mayor, council members. As a member of the staff for a considerable amount of time now, as we work on grant applications as directed by the town manager through the mayor and council, there are a series of questions that come up that we oftentimes hesitate to answer because we know what the outcome is. When it comes to federal grants, these are two questions that really dictate whether or not you make it to the next level. The first question is, are you representing an underserved or impoverished community? The second one is, do you meet FEMA's reference to impoverished or underserved? And more often than not, those two questions are no. And the reason I'm bringing this up is because there are another series of questions after that related to federal grants, and each of them ask important questions about what you've done to prepare to utilize this federal money should you be selected. One of the ones that are asked in the first 12 questions are, have you completed your SS4A assessment, and do you have that report? And do you have directive from that report on the project that you are applying for? We're here tonight to discuss a typical question on a federal government application when you're applying for infrastructure funds. The SSA4 grant that we are asking for consideration tonight is really a long-range planning document that the majority of it is paid for by federal government funding that allows the Public Works Engineering Department and, by default, the town manager and council to plan for the future infrastructure improvements or the application of grants to put towards those projects. There has been a considerable amount of discussion as of recent, especially since this was publicized, about the reference to zero. From a personal perspective, as the Public Works Director, I would like to see zero crashes between vehicle, on-vehicle conflict, bicycle and vehicle conflicts, and by all means pedestrian and vehicle conflicts. My personal agenda in regards to zero has nothing to do with anything else that may or may not be happening around this nation, but it certainly impacts all of the residents that live here, when we would like to see reduced or eliminated accidents. This document, in some part, but a smaller portion, looks at ways to minimize or eliminate through improvements at particular locations to our transportation infrastructure. How can you accomplish that? I'm going to give you some past examples of things that we have done to accomplish these goals. The most recent one that the majority of this council is aware of, if not sit, sitting on the council, certainly as a resident, that was the decision to add an always-stop at the intersection of Saguaro and Fountain Hills Boulevard. That is a significant safety improvement. Are we going to get down to a zero-crash data there? It's not likely, but we have already certainly reduced the number of crashes with severe injuries, simply because the cost traffic on Fountain Hills Boulevard is forced to stop. As a result of that, the crashes are lower-speed, lower-impact crashes. That's just one example of the recent one. Other examples include updates or upgrades to our traffic signals to include LEDs as opposed to incandescent bulbs. All of those for all of our traffic signals were paid for by a grant, which was a considerable amount of funding almost 16 years ago, given that we have 13 traffic signals and only one or two of them were operating on LEDs. All the rest of them were on incandescent bulbs at that time. So, when we put in the hours and the days and sometimes weeks necessary to fulfill the directive of the town manager as directed by the mayor and council for these grants, we take all of the future and the past into consideration. As of recent, we've had to sit with the town manager and simply say, this grant is not good for the community. It's going to cost too much money, too much time, and it has some underlying issues that are not going to sit well, not only with staff but the elected body. I can stand here tonight and say that this SS4A grant is a benefit to this community because it provides long-range funding options and tools for this community to leave, use for infrastructure improvements, long after I'm gone, if the document is properly prepared by the correct consultant and utilized over the generations for just that purpose. I know it's a little bit of a winded explanation with some caveats in there and a rare, my personal opinion, but I was sharing it, just so you would be aware. Having said all of that, I will do my best to answer any questions that you may have related to this application.
Councilmember Earl.
Yes, and for full disclosure, I did send you some questions, so you might not be surprised my questions now. Looking at this, I'm trying to understand by, if we take this, it's $240,000, we have to match the $60,000 out of the town money to get this grant for safe streets. It's just in the planning of it, but these different things kind of make my hairs stand up. We have to provide reasoning why, how this would be racially equitable and also, I don't understand how racial equity is on a street, safety, and also climate change and environment justice impacts. That, I don't know how that relates to the streets, safety. And then if we do not follow the general terms and conditions, if we do not follow those, then we would be subject to having to return the money. So, I'm just curious how much of that, because it's a federal grant, are they going to determine how we have to, and what is it that we're going to have to do that would affect racial equity and those type of things? I mean, I don't even know how that relates to a street.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Earl, so the majority of what you just described is boilerplate information related to federal government monies. The majority of that determination comes about by every 10 years, whenever we do a census. So, that information is already in the census. Most of the questions are asking about whether or not we have X amount of this particular race or this particular race. That question's already answered, but part of this federal boilerplate. In regards to, and there's a lot of terms and conditions here, a majority of those questions had already been asked and/or answered as part of the grant application, and had we not met the criteria to receive the funding, we would not have made it to the level that we're at tonight. In regards to not fulfilling any of them, I'm hard-pressed to believe that the town would not be able to fulfill the terms and the agreement that I've read, which is extensive. There's considerably a lot more than the few little tidbits that you just pulled out of that. Again, the majority of these are answered as part of the grant application. A balance of them are answered in regards to the census, and then the rest of them, as we move forward, through the public hearing process, we will address those concerns as mandated by the federal government.
And can you explain some ways that we would be, as a federal government, telling us how to make the streets safer? Would it be making them really narrow streets? Would it be making them really narrow streets? More things like that? How would they have their thumb on it?
Councilmember Earl, it's difficult to determine, so the federal government's not going to say that.
Okay.
The federal government is only giving us the money. We will hire a qualified consultant that goes through a process here, and that consultant will be vetted for this particular type of assessment. And they will assess the entire community as a whole and all of its infrastructure, and then slowly but surely in tidbits over a considerable amount of time, a couple of years, we would be receiving the information, we would be digesting it, we would share it with the town manager. At some points in time, we would approach the mayor and council, either in this room right here, or in an e-session if necessary, if it was some of the items we needed to discuss, and get direction. In the end, we would also, or getting closer as part of the development, we would begin to engage the public at not only the community center, but other gathering places, and get their input on the infrastructure needs. And I'm going to use "needs" as a word here. We are right now inundated with bicyclists that need more bike lanes in an area that we do not control, but we could work with the city of Scottsdale to address their concerns. We have several others that are demanding that the sidewalk be put in front of their house and not on Saguaro or on Palisades, because they need one. So those are the types of needs that we'll look at. We'll be addressing not only sidewalks, but bike lanes, bike paths, multi-use paths, trail connectors that not only connect to the community, but to the neighborhoods, and most importantly, all of our streets. What the outcome of that is, or what they're going to be suggesting, it's, we are really premature in that to make any assumptions there. But it won't be the federal government deciding that. It'll be a consultant.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So back a little more than a decade ago, I used to be quite involved in National Motors Association, and I think it was 2014, 2015, New York City came out with this vision zero. So Mayor de Blasio had this vision to not have pedestrian injuries from vehicles, and that's admirable, but the goal was to have the, to cut down to zero, which we know is not possible. So it really led to very extreme actions, severe road diets, reducing lane miles to bike lane miles, you know, now there's a congestion tax for vehicles in New York City, things like that. Now, here in Fountain Hills, we've already seen a severe road diet with Golden Eagle, where we now have parking spots and bike lanes that are, seem to be more important than traffic lanes, and, you know, people, even people like saying they can't make a left turn onto some streets there because the left turn lane is so shrunken because of that road diet. So that's very significant. So then when I look at this document, and I start, you know, looking, there's keywords in there that, you know, very woke, DEI-type stuff, so, you know, this document mentions gender identity. What does that have to do with any of our roads or anything this council will do? This document has seven mentions of greenhouse gas emissions. This document mentions climate change nine times. This document mentions environmental justice 13 times. And to top it off, this document mentions equity 20 times. This is not for our town. This would be a mistake. This would be a mistake, just like re-lining Golden Eagle. So I will make a motion to deny this.
I would like to second that motion. If it's all right, I would like to make a comment.
You need to be recognized, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
We have Councilman Watts, and then you, Hannah, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation, but I do have a couple of comments and questions. One, what's the duration? How long do we have to spend the money?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Watts, I believe that the money has to be spent by the end of 2027.
So we've only got two years to spend it. How long will the consultant take to do their job? Because you said multiple years, and it'd be iteration after iteration. How long would it take for the consultant to do Phase 1, call it?
The timeframe for that is unknown at tonight's meeting, but with this type of grant, if you begin to bump up against their limitations, they send you in advance and ask if you need an extension of 18 to 24, or however many months you need to accomplish the goal. So they set some standard timeframes up front, but those are historically moved, not only with this grant, but most other grants, or grant funding as a whole.
And your best estimate, what would a consultant cost?
For one of this magnitude, I would be hard pressed to call that out.
Wouldn't you guess that normally consultants are in the range of 10% of what the overall cost of the project is? Is that a round number that you could use?
10% is what we would use if we had a project number for the assessment. We don't necessarily have a project number. So I would expect that the lion's share of the funding would be sent on a consultant.
Okay. And it's interesting, you mentioned bicycle lanes. I've been harping about bicycles, bicyclists for a long time, about them not adhering to traffic laws. I saw one just this morning, right at a Lago and Saguaro, coming up to a red light, all the traffic stopped, the bicyclist made the right turn, went 20 feet, made a left turn into the lane of a Lago, made another left turn to get back to Saguaro, and down the road they went by missing, avoiding that traffic light. And this is probably for MCSO more than you, but I think there's more education that needs to be applied to cyclists and enforcement than there is more bike lanes. I think they've got lots of bike lanes, maybe not enough, but I think we can pretty easily identify where bike lanes are necessary, just looking on traffic and so on. So I don't know that I'd be a supporter of this at this point either. Thanks.
Vice Mayor Toth.
I want to echo the earlier comments by my fellow council members, but on top of that, I did look into Vision Zero, and of course, I would want for there to be zero accidents, zero pedestrian injuries, and of course, zero pedestrian deaths. My, part of my job, however, as an elected official, is finding hidden meaning in items, and my concern with Vision Zero is it does reflect a ideal reality. And what I've noticed is very often, on the, on one of the sides of the aisle, things where people look really sweet and kind and have a good smile, or the website's really nice, and what they're saying sounds like a wonderful thing if we could do that, and you find out it's not so great in practice. And that comes into, and I'm not saying that this is the same thing, I'm, I'm making an example, 15-minute cities, only because a fellow council member had mentioned it, socialism or communism, I mean, these things that look nice and they sound great, like, oh, I wouldn't have to pay for anything, and then you find out it's not so great. That is the same feeling that I'm getting with Vision Zero. I'm sorry, but it is. There's several buzzwords in there. I've done some research on that, and it's just not something I feel comfortable inviting in the town, and I hope that you'll trust me, that I'm going off my gut feeling, that there's some hidden meaning there.
Councilperson Brenda Collybeanakis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I too, I share the concerns of everyone that spoke tonight on this Vision Zero. It struck me the same way. One of the hardest parts of my job, I think, as I look back in the two years, is some of the things that we did approve for grant funding had a lot of hidden clutter in the closet. When we approved the OxyContin settlement money, it's called for giving fairy needles to drug addicts from central locations in the town. I, I don't think that we're going to provide those, and so I just kind of hoped and prayed. It was just boilerplate language, we're going to take the money, and we're going to try to do drug prevention and give that money to the coalition. So there is a certain leap of faith that we take, taking any of this federal money. But yeah, when they say that, you know, we are going to try for no death, no serious injury, you know, it kind of sounds COVID-esque to me, like when the mayor had the draconian policies against COVID, because, you know, if we can prevent one death, you know, we're going to do all this inconvenience to New York. And I thought that was a very bad public policy as well, because look at the damage that was done to the people, to the kids, to the community, to the business community. A lot of damage was done in the name of doing good. And so I, I will vote for this money, because I'm going to be optimistic and hope that when we receive it, it's going to be well-spent, and hopefully it will prevent lives being lost. But I would give the caveat that, to future council members that might be responsible for this, to be careful with this money, and if they have to put, tamp the brakes on it later, and just say, look, we're not interested in it. You know, I know this is just strategies, this isn't built, this isn't shovels in the ground, but I, I'm going to vote for it, like I said, with optimism, but I agree with my fellow council members, that it's fraught with danger.
And I'll weigh in now. I think we have an excellent traffic safety committee in this town that highlights and identifies our issues. I sat in on a couple of those meetings, and every email, message, social media post, they go through, and you're in, you're in that committee, Justin, as well. They go through it with a fine-tooth comb, and we respond to everything. And I think there's two other members up here that would agree with that. I think we, maybe we need to pursue some other solutions at this point, and I'd like to take that $60,000 and put it into wash maintenance. We've got a big problem in this town with our washes, and I know you're up on another agenda item on that. So I think, for me, that money could be better spent dealing with some other issues in the town. So, Councilmember McMahon.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. To me, this isn't a political issue at all. This is grant money that the town can use. It also can aid and help the committee that I happen to be on for pedestrian safety, you know, to improve the safety, the health, and welfare of our town. To get $240,000, $1,000, and only have to expend 60, to me, you don't need a rocket science to figure that out. Our town and our staff works hard to get grants, they utilize them wisely, and, you know, they're few and far between. So I'm going to vote for this, because I respect the fact that you know what you're doing, the staff knows what it's doing, and that this is just grant money that's going to happen to be given to us from, hopefully, from the federal government. We're going to, we're smart enough, our staff is smart enough, to use it appropriately, properly, there's no woke involved, or any, this is not to be a political matter. This is grant money for the town that we can use. So thank you very much.
Town Clerk, do we have any comments?
Yes, sir. You had three submitted today against the agenda item. I have three requests to speak if Shelby Leeblecker is still here. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council members, Shelby Leeblecker, 11-month resident of the town, I don't think I said, made that clear the last time I was up here. Some of you already stole some of my thunder, but this is a solution looking for a problem. $60,000 to get a $240,000 grant for a town this size is a waste of money. You know I've come from LA, you know I've fought against Vision Zero, and from my experience with Vision Zero, it's a program to eliminate pedestrian deaths entirely and get them down to zero as they relate to automobile accidents. Plain and simple. All the other frills in it, yeah, there's all these other frills. SS4A is Safe Streets for All. Coming from LA, I can tell you that in Los Angeles, someone dies in a car accident every three days. It's not what's happening here. When you read through the staff report on this, you get to the point where you start to understand this is a feel-good project. The Comprehensive Street Action Plan will provide, will position Fountain Hills as a leader in transportation, safety, and sustainability. So to get through all this, you go down to the grant agreement from the Federal Highway Safety Administration. So you've got an 18-page document on here that you have to read through. You get to page two, and there's the hyperlink that brings you to the terms and conditions. But what it really gets you to is a page that you have to still make choices on, that say, is this a fiscal year 2022 awardee, or 23 awardee? Which one of these links do I click on? And once you figure out which one of these links to click on, then you get to the 33-page Terms and Conditions document that you've got to read through. And I'll give you some Cliff Notes. If you get to page six, you're going to see what the purpose is, and it's got to do with safety action plans in regards to pedestrians and bicyclists, and reducing deaths down to zero. You get down to page 14, and you see what the SS4A Streets for All final report is, and it tells you how your hands are tied on this. Now, the town wants to do this to reduce pedestrian deaths down to zero. When I looked online and tried to find something about pedestrian deaths, I had to go back to 2018, and that was the last time a pedestrian died here. There were four people that died because of somebody, 27-year-old from out of state, jumped a curb, hit four people, and they all died. I would say the town already has a pretty solid reputation of fulfilling the ideals of Vision Zero. So why do we need to spend $60,000 to study what else we can do? In LA, jaywalking is legal. They made it legal because political reasons, whatever. I don't think, I don't know what the town's laws are for jaywalking, but I do know that when I moved here in very short period of time, all my friends told me, don't speed in town, you're going to get a ticket. So I think Miracopa County Sheriff deserves a lot of accolades for the town achieving Vision Zero. Even my dentist told me, don't speed on Saguaro, you'll get a ticket for going over 35. So I don't see why we need this. I don't, there's plenty of other reasons and plenty of other ways we can spend $60,000. I'm vehemently against this. I will speak out against this every meeting you have, and I hope you all take this into consideration and vote this down tonight. The last thing that I need to say is that the prior administration kind of tied your hands on this, because when you get a federal grant, and then you turn around and say, I don't want it anymore, that really colors the federal government's desire to give you a grant in the future. So thank you to the prior administration for doing this to us, the gift that keeps on give. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be brief on this, but I too have concerns about the expectations from taking this grant money, and to simply say, well, it's $240,000 worth of free money. There's always conditions, and one of them is that we spend $60,000 to just get a plan for this Vision Zero. And, you know, like we were talking, is, does it include road diets? Does it include more bike lanes? I mean, are they, is everything going to be down to like a super-low speed? And the way it had said, right here in the staff notes, that the grant aligns with the town's commitment to Vision Zero principles, aiming to eliminate traffic-related fatalities and severe injuries. Well, I think you have a pretty good planning team already, and some of us actually, as residents, even said some concerns we had with roundabouts. And that's actually where the last, not fatality, but a very serious injury on the Christmas tree lighting happened. But I don't think getting $240,000 would have changed that in any way. That was a bad driver, that roundabout's kind of a bad design. We all know that pedestrians and roundabouts don't mix because it is to keep traffic flowing. But that being said, I, I too see the politics in this. I looked into some other internet research things, because I don't have the huge packet that you guys get, but right away, I kind of saw that it was a $1.2 trillion infrastructure law provided, that provided $108 billion in grants to improve public transportation, and it's going to enable the cities to get this a step closer to the zero-traffic fatalities and injuries. So then, one of the- So then, one of the considerations to be awarded this grant, equity, very big word. Improvements for underserved communities in impacted zones such as high-speed intersections and rural communities. It also used the terms equity, engagement, and collaboration. Like you've mentioned up there, climate change and sustainability, green transportation system, reducing environmental impact of carbon emissions, and once again, focused on speed. Now, speed does impact safety, no doubt, but how are they going to be monitoring this? One thing I saw from a tech firm, they're actually going to be putting all this technology in the vehicles, probably of all the staff who have any vehicles, and so collecting data about things like that. I'm just saying that 60 grand at a time that people are complaining about changing their tires from just driving down Palomino, I don't think they're going to agree that this should all go to just study up on safety, because I think, like you mentioned, the size of our town, I think we have some pretty good insight, and committee's doing that right now. Thanks.
Greg Johnson?
Greg Johnson, resident Eagles Nest, on the Vision Zero thing, and Councilman Skillicorn pretty well nailed it with the NMA. I agree with him. Most of your Vision Zero deals with speed, speeding. All the other things that were mentioned are further down the list. This came out of the more progressive wing of the Federal Highway Administration, and for those who are old enough, as I am, if you remember 50 years ago, President Nixon decided to put in the 55 mile an hour speed limit, because it's going to save gas. Well, it didn't. And they said, "Okay, well, it saves lives." It didn't, and they proved it didn't. So 30 years after that, oh, excuse me, 20 years after that, in the Clinton administration, they repealed the law. And insurance companies and the government said, "Oh, no, it's going to be carnage on the highway." It didn't happen. It had nothing to do with speed. It had to do with bad driving, and I call it driving while stupid, and that's what caused the four fatalities in this town. It wasn't due to speed limits, it wasn't due to road design. Somebody did something stupid. Usually it's driving under the influence, or trying to catch a cigarette butt that fell in your crotch, you don't want to get burned, but it's always something stupid. So I don't like this. They all have to say it's speed, 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 speed. Your own Arizona Department of Transportation stopped the Vision Zero safety corridor study after three years, because they said it didn't work. And that's verified by a March 2022 article, or broadcast on ABC 15, Arizona. So the data's out there, it's coming in from AZDOT. Speed limit should be set at the 85th percentile, that's another discussion for another day. But I don't like this. It's like the camel getting its head under the tent, and then you wonder why the tent comes down. I don't like this Vision Zero, you know, it's like having an airplane fly at 10 feet so you can jump out if something goes wrong with the airplane. People are going to drive at a reasonable speed based on the road and their professional experience and skill level. Probably violating every rule of this organization, but this is the second time I've had to witness as a citizen. Two of you councilmembers, first one was with Councilman Skillicorn over a year ago, and the second one was tonight. You're entitled to your opinion, you're entitled to free speech. Put your big-girl pants on and act like adults. You embarrassed yourself, and it's not the first time you've done it. I'm a professional, private practice for 32 years. If you ever behave in front of me like that, on a committee, I'd nail you to the wall for your behavior. Thank you.
Any other speakers? I'll consider a motion. Did you make a motion?
I made a motion, but I think it was seconded. The motion denied.
Hannah did second it. And what was the motion again?
To deny.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Earl?
I appreciate all the time you put into this, Justin, but I'm a aye.
That's a yes?
That's to deny. A yes is to, as a no.
Councilmember Calaviannakis?
I'd be a nay.
Councilmember Watts?
Aye.
Councilmember Skillicorn?
Yes.
Councilmember McMahon? Vice Mayor Toth?
Aye.
Mayor Friddell?
Aye.
That's five against and two for. It's, yeah, five to deny and two not to deny. How's that?
Okay, next on the agenda is J, which is consideration of amending number one to professional services agreement to Top Leaf Services for, no, I'm sorry, it's H. H. Approving Amendment Number Two to Professional Services Agreement 2020-063 to Kimberly Horn and Associates for the Final Plans Related to the Phase One Shea Boulevard Capital Improvement Project. Justin, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor. This amendment, which is the second amendment to the design for the section of Shea eastbound, south side, between Palisades and Fountain Hills Boulevard, has actually been underway for several years. When it started, there were some conditions that needed to be met in regards to a LOMAR, which is a floodplain study, a lot of technical stuff there. During that process, it slowed down, obviously, because it requires review and approval of the federal government. Moving forward, got almost all the way up to 100% ready to seal plans, when there were some concerns raised by a geotechnical engineer, of whom I have respect for, but our opinions differ greatly on this. And that was some of the area adjacent to the old lake bed on the south side, where waters used to flow to evaporate from the sanitary system, and also stormwater off of Shea. He had legitimate concerns about some washouts and some blowouts there. A quick explanation to explain that. Water running off of Shea Boulevard got into the dirt and made a big flow out into the area. That area that was then filled with material that was readily available either on the side of the street, or perhaps somebody donated it. Another one is the blowout, and that's where water ponded up higher on the area, and that weight caused that material to shift out. Those concerns were legitimate. Additional money was spent to have the geotechnical engineer go in, do some soil borings, come back with some recommendations. The last little section that has delayed it is on the very western section, on the south side. When that plat was recorded, we did not secure the necessary right away for a longer, flatter slope. So some survey is necessary to determine what is the best fit for that. Do we do stacked retaining walls, or do we do a steeper slope with a guardrail? The monies for tonight that we're asking for approval for will address each of those concerns and result in a set of 100% plans that we will then use to go to bid and actually start the construction, which would be in next fiscal year, if everything works out, and we believe it should based on that. Having said that, the design and the construction are shared by some of the state revenue gathering for the half-cent sale tax, which is going to expire here in the next year or so. So we have money allocated already in the budget for this at the state, and we have capital monies that we can utilize to pay for this. Having said that, and hopefully not leaving anyone confused, if you have any questions, I'll do my best to answer them.
I just want to confirm on here, it says, there, it looks to me like we will not be, well, it says not to, the total will not exceed, well, like 100,000, or 99,000, right? So it won't happen, I mean, like, this is it? This is the last bit until we go to construction? Is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Earl, that is correct. This is to complete the design.
Okay, great.
Councilmember Watts?
Justin, is there a single washout area on the south side, or is there multiple washout areas?
Multiple washout areas along the south side, near the dry lake beds. And then there were also questions in regards to an area where rack recycled aspaltic concrete was used near the valve station, just adjacent across from palatial estates. When the Shea Boulevard project was milled to the town limit, considerable of that material was blended with the fill that was on site and used to fill that slope.
So if I read between the lines, are some of the, some of the storage areas where we've got asphalt, the shavings and so on, are those going to get cleaned up finally?
Councilmember, there's a couple of sections where they're going to excavate down two feet, and then rebuild that up. There are a couple of other locations where it'll be necessary to do horizontal penning. So they'll pin that fill material to the existing roadway.
So you talked about retaining walls or something else? And I assume one, something else is like a dry well for those particular areas?
Councilmember, the reference would be either to retaining walls on the very western end, or a very steep slope of one and a half to one. So ideally, what we want are two-to-one, three-to-one, or four-to-one slopes adjacent to our roadways. In the event that a car leaves the roadway, it goes down a much flatter or gentler slope. But in this location, we may not have the necessary land to accomplish a two-to-one or flatter slope. We may need to go steeper to a one-to-one, or one and a half to one, or if that's going to be too costly, do a couple of retaining walls and then do a flatter slope.
Yeah, one-to-one seems like it'd be a great candidate for a port-in-place retaining wall. Just saying. And then finally, the, and I think I probably lost track of what I was going to ask you. Give me 30 seconds. I'll stop, thanks.
You're welcome, if you remember.
I will, I'll be back.
Councilmember Calaviannakis?
I just wanted to make a motion, Jerry.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Amendment Number Two to Professional Services Agreement 2020-063 to the Kimberly Horn and Associates contract.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please. I'm sorry, Rick's got his.
I remembered. The engineering costs, do they, are they inclusive of either the retaining walls, or whatever the retention is going to be necessary for those washout areas?
Yes, they are.
Okay, thank you. That was it.
Councilmember Earl, did you have something you want?
Oh, I was.
Okay. Town Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Earl?
Aye.
Councilmember Calaviannakis?
Aye.
Councilmember Watts?
Aye.
Councilmember McMahon?
Aye.
Councilmember Skillicorn?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Toth?
Aye.
Mayor Friddell?
Aye.
Seven to zero.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is J, and it's, Justin, again, possible action, approving amendment number one to Professional Services Agreement 2025-030 with Top Leaf Tree Services LLC for Wash Maintenance.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, councilmembers, it's not lost on myself, the town manager, anyone else on the staff, or the selected body about the concerns that are legitimate for the wildfires raging out of control in California. We have certainly, all of us, received phone calls, emails. I do not engage in any social media at all, but I've heard reference to social media within the building. It's difficult for someone like me to calm a resident of Fountain Hills and try and explain that the conditions, while similar, are not the same. That is a very, very difficult task to do. While wash maintenance has always been a priority, there has been some delays as a result of some contractual issues and redefining and rewriting the scope and fee for not only the washes, but all of the dam maintenance and all of the drainage slivers. Earlier, or, I was about to say earlier this year, excuse me, late last year, I gave a presentation to the mayor and council, and shared with them the incredible progress that had been made on washes up to that date. Additional progress has been made since that time, but we've reached our contract threshold, and we simply cannot go any farther without additional funding. Having said that, and recognizing the challenges and the concerns that the residents share, and legitimately about wildfires, we're simply asking for enough money to get us into that season, when it gets hot, and it's simply not safe to be in there, to make some more progress on these washes. Having said that little portion, given the amount of work necessary to complete all of the tasks in front of us, we're going to do some shifting and a little bit of prioritizing in a couple of strategic locations in Fountain Hills that we have reassessed. With approval of this funding, we are going to go into those geographic locations and immediately begin to remove primarily the palm trees first, so we can see what we need to do next. I myself personally walked in one of these recently with the mayor. It's almost impossible in a couple of these cases for one to see more than 10 or 15 feet due to the prolific growth of the palm trees. That's what we're going to be focusing on now. Earlier in this conversation, you heard me note the warm weather. As soon as it gets hot, there are inherent hazards that are substantially increased in wash maintenance. The first one is safety, worker safety. The washes are filled with wildlife, including but not limited to those that rattle when they're excited and bite when they're frightened. It is almost impossible to guard oneself against that type of threat in warmer weather. Also, when the weather is warmer, we try and avoid driving vehicles and using equipment in these areas that could potentially spark a fire. While we have the ability to temporarily, or to quickly extinguish something very small with the fire extinguishers that are required, we're going to be relying on the Fountain Hills Fire Department to provide support and get to us. So there's a portion of the year when it's simply too hot and not safe to work in the washes. Immediately after it cools down, coincidentally, is a new year, and there will be additional funding at that time, and we'll get right back on it. With that said, once again, the Public Works Department, the town manager, and we've had these discussions, we recognize and value the comments and communications between the residents and the elected body about the concerns related to wildfires. We understand that, and we're going to continue to work forward to mitigate that to the best of our ability in this community.
I think I'll add that I've been in probably a half a dozen washes in the last couple of weeks, and I've seen the mess some of these washes are firsthand. So I'm 100% in favor of this. Are there any other councilmembers? Councilwoman Earl?
I just have a quick question. What is the increase amount you're asking? I know it was somewhere, I just don't have in front of me.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Earl, we're asking for an additional $140,000.
I think that's well-spent money. Thank you.
Councilmember Skillicorn?
Motion approved.
Second.
Mayor, there's one public comment.
Okay.
Mayor, Ms. Mayor, council, thank you very much for being tonight, having this on the agenda for tonight. I'm Kermit Benke. I'm HOA officer for Arrow Gulch. It's a small HOA of eight condos along Ashbrook Wash, and perhaps, you're speaking of palm trees, that's a lot of palm trees right there. I'm also a longtime professional in environmental management, particularly revegetation. I understand the concerns with aesthetics of our population, of being fire-wise, and right there, I want to say thank you to all your staff, your agents. I understand the concerns with aesthetics of our population, of being firewise, and right there, I want to say thank you to all your staff, your agencies, your departments. They've led us a long ways in doing items on our property, being more protective of our property. Thank you very much for them, but also for the forever insufficient funds that you have to properly manage this as we feel it should be managed. On June 4th, 2024, within a half hour, there must have been 40 palm trees on fire. The fire department was all over it, just amazing. Maricopa County Sheriff's Department was at our door saying, you have five minutes. That, that makes Arrow Gulch HOA scared. I assure you that. We want to stand here in support of what you're doing tonight and ask for a yea vote on 140, but again, asking that, apparently, I am sorry I haven't met you yet, that you continue your plans and strategic plans on managing the entire neighborhoods. Thank you very much.
Roll call.
Councilmember Earl.
Aye.
Councilmember Calviannakis.
Aye.
Councilmember Watts.
Aye.
Councilmember McMahon.
Aye.
Councilmember Skillicorn.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Toth.
Aye.
Mayor Friddell.
Aye.
Seven to zero.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next is council discussion and direction to the town manager. Councilmember Earl.
I hear my name a lot tonight. I would like to see on a future agenda the items of.
That'll come up next, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's all right. Right? Yeah. Okay, so hold that thought, we'll get to that. Councilmember Watts?
So, that was quick. Okay. I'd like to ask staff to, as a follow-up to the previous speaker, I've gotten an email, and I assume that a lot of the council members have gotten the same email about Firewise. Is it possible that we can put together something for the community center to say, let's have a presentation, you know, half an hour or something, whatever Firewise recommended, but can we coordinate that?
Yes, it's actually underway. We're trying to figure out a date right now. We've kind of narrowed it down to February. I don't know if we have a date just yet. I think that last week of February is when we're trying to nail down. It's just coordinating, having the right presenters there, that making sure that they're available. As soon as we have that, we will be advertising that to the full community as a sort of a public service presentation.
Are we doing that through Fountain Hills Cares?
It may be in reference to, but we're not going to wait till the traditional time of Fountain Hills Cares. Generally Fountain Hills Cares usually is in April. This seems too timely to wait that long, so we're working to get that, win the next couple of weeks.
You could still do it. Brenda, do you have something you want to say?
Yeah, if I may, the mayor's already been in touch with me as a member of that council and expressed his concerns that this would be a really good program, and so, yeah, we're going to be working on that based on the suggestion of the mayor at Fountain Hills Cares.
I got one more.
Rick's got one more. Go ahead, Rick.
And I'm going to go back to, I don't know if there's a mechanism in place today, but to solicit services from local vendors as opposed to going outside the town. Do we have any mechanism that does that? The advertisement, is it public? I mean, do we know? There seems, we have slighted a couple of vendors, and I'd like to see if there is something we can do to make sure that we give, not first right of refusal, so to speak, but at least they get a shot.
Sure. Well, and the mayor and I have actually had quite a few conversations on this because it was part of his 100-day pledge, so, and I can be, would be happy to share more information and more background than I can probably recall this evening, but the short answer is that we make it a point to solicit work and use local when possible. We did a quick cursory search, and we are at over 200 local businesses that we use on an annual basis for different things, a lot of different services and purchases and whatnot. That being said, we put out RFPs, we want to make sure that they understand, local businesses understand how to do business with us. For instance, if you're interested in being our service provider to clean the fountains along the avenue, we put out a bid, so there has to be a, they have to have certain insurance requirements, they have to have certain staffing abilities, they have, so there are things that we have to do, but we will be hosting a vendor forum for, to help local businesses understand what we need, what they can do, how to be involved, and kind of help navigate that process, sort of demystify it a little bit. So it is a work in progress, but I'll be happy to share a little bit more comprehensively through an email to the council if you'd like.
Thank you very much.
So I have a couple of things. Somebody mentioned the public outcry for the tower that was proposed on the flagpole. Is that part of the package generally, or do we get to see the number of people that commented, or the yea or nay type of thing? Can we make sure that we address that at some point?
Sure, let me get with John on what we typically do, and make sure if there is something we need to change about that process.
Because I do remember sitting at the planning and zoning meeting for that one as well, and I think there were 65 people that, they had a petition against that, and there were 65 people that had signed that petition, and I don't remember seeing that as part of the, part of the package. So I think that's important going forward, that we have that communication out there. And then secondly, I know Peggy was on the call, legislative call, I want to bring this up, the food tax that they're talking about, that might end up coming to, through a committee and then ending up on a ballot for the public to vote on. That's going to cost this town about $2 million, $2.1 million in revenue. That's a big hit to our budget. It's 10% of our income. So we have to be prepared, we have to find out if this council is going to be united when it comes to the fact that we want to get a letter or something and have them really consider that. That's going to really affect the small, small-town budgets especially. Now, I have reached out to John Kavanaugh, and I told him that we have, it's over a $2 million hit, so he knows that, he's got numbers from me already on that, so I've done that elected to elected, and he's aware of that now. So, plus the hit on the short-term tax. So we're talking, you know, about $2.8 million, that's a big hit for this town. So at some point, I know they're going to be looking for the town to do something as far as a letter of yea or nay. So I want to make sure that all of our council is aware of that at some point in time, we're going to have to weigh in on this.
Mayor, if I may, just to follow up on Councilmember Watts, the, I just received an updated text that the Firewise Conversation or Public Event is scheduled for February 24th, so we'll be working to put out some save the dates and public information on that. I don't know the time, I don't have all the details other than the date right now. So, save the date, more to come.
Probably at the community center, right? Okay, all right. Any other direction to town staff from anybody? Thank you, chief. Okay, so with that, we'll consider future agenda items if anybody has any. Councilmember Earl?
Yes, I would like to see on the agenda where we can revise the current sign ordinance, and also, we had someone come up and talk earlier about the group home ordinance, if we could look at that again as well.
You need, you need a couple more people to support you on that.
I'll support that.
And Alan's the third. Both of them, yeah.
There's two.
Yeah, there's two. Yeah, yeah. Okay, and if that's it, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We're adjourned. Thank you.